Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, gentlemen. Welcome to the December 16th regular meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council. Our first order of business, as always, is to pridefully stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Olds, would you please call the roll?
With pleasure, Mayor Sprouse. Councilmember Rajan?
Here.
Councilmember Silva?
Here.
Councilmember Simmons?
Here.
Mayor Protam Rainey?
Here.
Mayor Skrell?
Here. And before we get into tonight's business, I would like to welcome Kish and Bob up here. And it's my first time as mayor in a number of years, so I'm allowed one do-over and you guys are allowed two do-overs, your first meeting. Fair enough? All right. Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Would any councilmembers like to pull any of the items 2A through 2S?
Mayor Skrell, I don't wish to pull any item, but while I was on the Planning Commission, I did act with regard to item 2C, and so I would abstain with regard to that.
Okay.
And I would also note that I, with regard to 2B, the only meeting that I attended was December 2nd.
Right.
Therefore, I would move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Are there any comments from the audience on consent calendar items 2A through S? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item on the agenda is public communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for comments on items not on the agenda. We are not allowed to take action on these items, but if anybody would like to address the council, now is the time to do that. Good evening.
Mr. Mayor of the council, I pray for King. I want to welcome you, incumbent, and I want to welcome the two new councilpeople, just like I said farewell to the outgoing, I say welcome, see you later, thank you.
Thanks, Primo. Any other public communications? Wow, this is going good, so far. Next item on our agenda is council considerations. This is the Broadway Plaza Retail Project. I believe Ms. Meyer will kick us off.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Meyer, and I am the interim community development director. As the council is aware, on September 16th of this year, you approved a general plan amendment to allow the Mace Ridge Company, who is the owner of Broadway Plaza, to add another major anchor, Neiman Marcus. Through the general plan amendment that you approved included an increase in the allowable floor area ratio for the project site from .75 up to 2.0, and also, the general plan amendment allowed an increase in the building height from 35 feet to the Measure A height limit of 50 feet on the southern portion of the project site. On October 8th, signature gatherers began circulating a referendum petition against the resolution approving the general plan amendment. This is allowed for under the California Elections Code, which provides that any legislative action, including general plan amendments, can be subject to referendum. If petitions are submitted within 30 days of the legislative action that are signed by at least 10% of the registered voters in the city, which in the city is approximately 4,000 voters, signatures, the city council is required to either repeal the action or put it to a vote, put it on the ballot. On October 16th, the referendum petition was filed with the city clerk with approximately 5,800 signatures. And as required by the Elections Code, the signatures were over reviewed by the Contra Costa Elections Department, which determined that the petitions did contain valid signatures representing at least 10% of the registered voters in the city. They did not check all of the approximately 5,800 signatures, as their policy is to stop once the requisite number is certified. On December 1st, as required by law, the city clerk certified the petition, including the requisite number of signatures, and through the report that you received this evening, she certified those results to you. On December 1st, in light of the signatures being verified, the Mace Ridge Company submitted a letter to the city council requesting that it repeal the general plan amendment, as called for in the petition, and indicated their intention is to propose a modified Neiman Marcus project that will address public concerns. And with that, staff is recommending that the city council repeal the general plan amendment.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? No questions?
Not at this time. I think we're going to have comments, so I thought maybe.
Okay. Well, I have one question, sorry. So, we don't have a quantifiable number of signatures that have been certified above the requisite minimum?
That's correct.
That's how it works?
Right.
Okay.
I might just ask what the process is for rescinding, then? We just say?
How do you spell that?
By adopting the resolution that you have before you, you are repealing that decision?
Yes, but I mean, that's, okay.
Yes.
And it does not have to go through any other bodies?
Not for the general plan amendment, right, that was called for in the referendum.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will open it up to comments from the public. This is not a public hearing, so I believe everybody is allowed three minutes to speak their mind, so please step forward.
I guess I'm first. Good evening, Chuck Davis with the Mace Ridge Company, 401 Wilshire Boulevard, Santa Monica, California. Good evening, mayor, councilmembers, and staff. When we came in with our application and went through the process last summer and into the fall, we felt very firmly that the addition of Neiman Marcus to Broadway Plaza would mean the addition of good jobs, sizable retail sales tax revenues for the city, and in our minds, something very important to preserve, not only Broadway Plaza's position, but the city's retail position in this marketplace for several decades to come. Over the last several weeks, however, we spent a great deal of time looking at the public comments that we received through the public hearing process. We did two separate pollings in light of the challenge to the EIR and the referendum. And we think in light there are opportunities to improve our project in partnership with Neiman Marcus, to have it go from what we think is a great project to what we expect to be an excellent fit for the community and a well-received addition to downtown. We've been down this road before. It is part of our cultural makeup, and so it is time for us to go back to the community right after the holidays and make this a better project to bring forward for your consideration in whatever manner that is, here, so that the community of Walnut Creek can feel that this is the right decision for Walnut Creek. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public which wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for comments.
Well, I would just say, I think it's really, it's amazing that a company like Mace Ridge would step forward, up to the plate, and rethink the project and work with the community. And I know it's, while people have said that it was kind of backdoor-ish, there were seven public hearings and it took quite a while, but I think the kind of community input that you're looking for and to get the community to accept it, I applaud you for taking this step.
Cindy, any comments?
I would reiterate what Mayor Protam Rainey said. Thank you very much for coming forward, and I look forward to seeing how you engage the community, other than through the public hearing process. I know that can sometimes be very frustrating for the public because it is a, as you saw tonight, you only got three minutes, and that can be sometimes frustrating for the public, so I appreciate that you're willing to do that, and it should be an interesting next few months. Thank you.
Kish?
I guess I'll just echo the comments that have been made. I think this is a very strong decision, and I'd also commend Mace Ridge and Broadway Plaza, our partners, for doing this. It shows that collectively, we are listening to the residents of Walnut Creek, and we're actively listening. We want the input, and we want that input to drive better projects for the community as a whole, and that community input, I think that we will, that you all will solicit and that we'll all want to hear, is going to shape a better project, and I think that's a very fine way to go, so I also want to add my thoughts in that regard.
Thank you.
Sure.
This is a very important area for Walnut Creek, for the success of Walnut Creek, and I think it's very good that you are going to take the time to involve and engage the public to try to design a better project. Thank you for that.
I also respect your request. I will also respect the staff's recommendation, but I honestly believe this will turn what was an excellent project, back when we approved it in September, to an even better project. You're listening to all of Walnut Creek, and I thank you for doing that. With that, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we, hold on, I probably need to check what we're, pardon me? Move to adopt the proposed resolution repealing the general plan amendment.
I would second that.
I don't think we need a roll call. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the appeal of design review approval for the Homestead Terrace.
Mayor Skrell, if I could interject, this is another matter that I acted on while I was a member of the Planning Commission, and so I will need to recuse myself from this, and I will be leaving the dais for the remainder of this item. I will be available to come back towards the end.
Thank you. Have fun.
Good evening. My name is Steve Buckley. I'm a staff planner in the Planning Department, and I've been working on this project, Homestead Terrace. It's our project number Y06060. It's located on Homestead Avenue, and it's just south of Agassio Valley Road, about 300 feet. This slide shows the two parcels that make up the property. It's somewhat of a triangular-shaped parcel. It's about a half an acre, and as you can see here, it's neighbored by existing development on all sides, townhouses to the north, west, and south. To the east is, in the county jurisdiction, there's a home at the top of the hill there, and what's not entirely clear here is that the hillside is quite steep, and that home is actually not really even visible from the street below. So, the property outlined in purple is the property that we're looking at. It's currently developed with two homes that are duplex rentals and would be demolished as part of this project. This is the neighboring townhouse development on the one side, to the south, and also to the north, similar townhouses, attached ownership housing, as well as some apartments. This is the site. It's quite overgrown. The two homes that you saw there are down below the roadway, not really visible from the street, behind the hedges and trees that are on the site. The orange tape that's visible in this picture is story poles that were put up for some time during the hearing process in the past year that were available to show the rough outline of the ridge line of the proposed condominium development that would be developed on this property. Similarly, here, showing some foliage, on the right side of the picture is the existing neighboring townhouses that are closest to the property. Again, the trees are quite thick and would be preserved as part of this project. There's a little bit of orange tape in this picture as well that shows the outline of the building at its closest point to this property.
Go ahead. We made the same question.
Yeah. Is that in the front of the picture, or is that in the back? That last, the orange?
The orange is towards the back. It's behind the tree. Yeah, it's a little hard to...
But it's in front of the other projects?
Yes, yes, it's closer to the, this project would be along Homestead, and these other townhouses are back accessed off of a private drive that runs along the side of this property.
Okay.
And this is also the view, pretty much from Homestead, towards the property.
Could I ask a question on this, Steve? Is, with, what I'm looking at this tape, is that a fair representation of the high point of the building, proposed building roofline?
Yes. It's, as you can tell, it sags a little bit, but the poles were put up to the proper height by surveyor and contractor, and outlines the overall bulk of the building.
Thank you.
So, in summary, the project itself would demolish those two duplexes. It would include a 12-unit condominium building. The building would be two stories over parking level, and that parking level would be down in the depression where the two houses are currently located. There would be 24 parking spaces, so two per unit. They would be on the lift system that's been used elsewhere recently in the city that stacks cars and has a mechanical lift and a key mechanism for each owner to operate and have two parking spaces. There would also be five independently accessible guest parking spaces. They would be making some frontage improvements on Homestead, where currently there's a lack of sidewalk and parking, and also, they would be adding lighting and drainage along the frontage. Tree preservation was one of the keys during the review process, and those large oak trees that screened the project from the immediate neighbors would be preserved, and I'll be showing some slides of the site plan in just a minute. The project was originally submitted in June of 2006 and has been in the review process ever since. The original project was basically filling the lot from property line to property line, except for the required minimum setbacks, so they had, all the trees would be removed, and there was a fairly simple design approach. All of that was revised through the hearing process. There were four study sessions and four hearings with the Design Review Commission and the Planning Commission over the course of a couple of years, and, as I mentioned, so this was the original submittal, pretty stark, I guess. It was, it was... The next iteration included more stonework and slightly different corner treatment with a sort of a turret balcony area. The next design really kind of moved it up a notch with more of a craftsman-style detailing with trim around the windows and different materials with wood and stone and stucco and shingles, more balconies with open railings, and a little bit more articulation on the different levels of the building. And this was still back in 2007. Later in 2007, it moved a little bit further, and finally, the project approved looked like this. Now, the top one and the bottom one are really the same view, but the bottom one has the landscaping shown with some trees and shrubs and some birmingham that would basically bring the foundation level of the building up a few feet.
Steve?
Yes.
So, the trees in the rear of the building, are those the existing oak trees?
Yes, the existing trees in the back of this view are the existing oak trees. I have another view coming up that shows the view from that side that the neighbors would see with the trees included. And the main feature here, I think, is off on the left, you can see how the building is now down to two stories, or really even one story, with more of a hip roof that really softens the edge that's closest to the neighboring townhouses on that side, and that wraps around as well towards the back. This is the side view that those townhouses would see, again, more trees, some foundation retaining walls, and on the left there, those are the existing oak trees, and so that's how the trees also are over the building, and the building is nestled in, and further off on the far left is the existing townhouses that are the closest to the property, and that shows the relationship of the rooflines. You can also see on the right side of this picture how it steps down towards Homestead Avenue, so the street frontage is also stepped down and has a lot of in-and-outs with balconies and rooflines there. This is the back with the five oak trees, and so the top view is without the trees, but really what you would see is through the trees, the colored view on the bottom. So, with this design, the Planning Commission felt that it did meet the required findings for approval of a tentative map, and so the subdivision itself was approved for the 12 units. These include some townhouse-style two-story units as well as flats, and also the parking and landscaping and frontage improvements were all included on that tentative map. The Design Review Commission then had its final hearing after several iterations of various design themes, and it approved the project in October. An appeal was timely filed by James Glassford, and that's the purpose of tonight's hearing, is to consider that appeal and the Design Review Commission's action. The tentative map was not appealed within the 10 days, and so that action is actually final at this point. The reasons stated in the appeal are that the general plan was not properly applied, that the Design Review Commission decision was made with insufficient information, that the project would significantly diminish the quality of life in the neighborhood, and that the project would violate city ordinances, and there was an attachment that particularly they outlined various sections that relate to building height. The general plan, as I mentioned, the Planning Commission made necessary findings along those lines, and the Design Review Commission did as well, but just to familiarize you with what they based those findings on, the site is zoned and designated in the general plan for medium-high multifamily housing, so 12 to 16 units could be built on the property. There was some discrepancy about what is the net acreage that should be calculated on the site with the various easements and frontage dedications. Even taking out all easements and dedications, 12 to, or 10 to 14 units could be built on the property. So, the proposed 12 is really right in the range, either the minimum or the middle of what could be reasonably built under the general plan. The same holds for the zoning. The 30-foot height limit is established in the zoning. There are yard requirements and coverage requirements. The property, as proposed with the development, would meet all of the requirements for yards and coverage and landscaping, and would be under the maximum number of units allowed. The real issue is the height limit, and I'll be talking about that more in just a minute. This is the guest parking and resident parking layout, as well as the provisions for outdoor open space along the property underneath the oak trees. There's a decking system that would preserve the root zone under the trees and not require irrigation, so those trees are expected to survive for quite a while, and other provisions for trash pickup and deliveries and pedestrian entry into the property. The first floor would have nine units, and the second floor would have an additional three units plus the upper stories of some of the units. So, that's really two stories of residential and a roof plan. Here, it's a little light, but basically showing that there's a lot of hips and gables and offsets in and out around the roofline, breaking up the mass of the building quite a bit. Landscape plan here shows substantial planting along Homestead, that's at the top of the drawing, and also on the right side is along the access drive that serves the neighboring condominiums. There's over 100 condominiums on the adjacent property, and this driveway serves them, and so there would be a great attention paid to that frontage as well. This is the frontage on Homestead. The curb line at the bottom of the picture is in front of the adjacent condominiums with the sidewalk, and then the sort of purple outline is the subject property, and as you can see, the sidewalk stops, oleanders take over, and there's just sort of a path beaten through the grass along the edge of the road, and this serves school to the north, and so part of the project would be to widen the pavement, extend the sidewalk, and, as I mentioned, just provide a bit more safety and other features there on the frontage. I was asked to show the striping plan for the street layout. This is really hard to read, but I'll just go through it really quickly. That existing shortcomings, as shown in the picture, it's, the street narrows, there's no sidewalk, and so this would widen the pavement to provide two-way left turn lane in the middle, which would serve the existing driveways and this project, so that cars that are waiting to turn would have a place to stack up, so that there's sort of a middle refuge, and then there would be two travel lanes in each, or one travel lane in each direction, two total. Sidewalk would also be added, and overall, this project would add six or seven trips in the peak hours, in the morning and in the evening, and this is according to trip generation data and the city traffic engineer. Depending on if you count the total number of units, 12 units, all-new, there would be 70 trips per day in and out of the project typically. However, there's actually four units already there, so you can sort of net that out, and there's even fewer new trips being added by this project. And that's just in the context of about 8,000 trips per day, eight to 9,000 along Homestead Avenue, so it's a fairly small contribution to the overall total. So, again, the findings that were made addressed the general plan and zoning, found that it was within the range and consistent with setbacks and so on, that it would provide a desirable living environment for those in the property, as well as addressing architectural considerations for the property and adjacent buildings, that there's a relationship, and that was all considered and found to be acceptable. The landscape plan, as I showed you, complements the buildings and provides an attractive environment, and the tree preservation ordinance would be complied with. So, those are the necessary findings, and those were all made. With that, the staff recommendation tonight is that you deny the appeal and that you approve the design review as approved by the Design Review Commission. The issue of height was brought up in the appeal, and it was wrestled with, I would say, with the Planning Commission and the Design Review Commission, and that the site has really unusual circumstances with the way that the existing homes are so low below the roadway, the way it's configured now, that the new project would use that to advantage by putting the garage for parking, as I mentioned, down at the bottom of the site, and using berms and retaining walls, creating a half-story really as a base for the residential, and then putting two stories of residential above. And so, in total, it's 30 feet, as viewed from Homestead Avenue, from the new sidewalk to the ridge of the roof, it would be 30 feet, which is conforming to zoning. The unusual circumstance is that it drops off so much from the street, and that the surrounding properties really are kind of filled in around this property, that it creates a bowl with a drainage pipe that really has to drain the site away from that existing bowl. And so, this property was deemed to have these unusual circumstances allowed by the zoning code to allow some flexibility in the overall height, and so that height does exceed 30 feet in some portions of the property around the back and sides of the building. And again, some of that is filled in with retaining walls, some of that is filled in with the decking, and it's really intended to preserve the oak trees. That was one of the major design considerations, was finding a way to not build into the root zone of the trees and address the drainage on the site and still have a reasonable development. And so, again, we believe that the height was conforming under the ordinance, that all the necessary hearings and studies were done, that the project was revised to respond to concerns, and that there are no significant impacts. That concludes my presentation.
Any questions from the council, Mr. Buckley?
I would like to wait to ask questions till after. What is the process we're going through tonight, in terms of the...
The process is, the applicant will, and I'm sure Ms. Olds will correct me if I'm wrong, the applicant will have 15 minutes... wrong, the applicant will have 15 minutes, then the appellant will have 15 minutes, and then if there are any group spokespersons, they will have 10 minutes, but then that's all that group gets to talk, is that one person for 10 minutes. Then there'll be individual speakers for three minutes, and then there'll be rebuttal by the applicant for five minutes. Did I pass?
The appellant.
No, by the applicant.
The applicant.
Yes. Okay. Right. And then we will close the public hearing, and then we'll have comments. So, if you think the questions of the council right now may help with some of the public hearing information, let's go ahead with some questions.
I have a couple that are technical. Can you, hi Steve, thank you very much for your presentation, as usual, very efficient. Can you explain the difference between the decision-making authority of the Design Review Commission and the planning commission in this case? Because do they have overlap? Did the planning commission, perhaps you can explain it so we could all understand it?
Sure. The planning commission is charged with looking at the tentative map, so the subdivision for condominium purposes. And so, they have a list of considerations as part of that map that they need to make findings for. And so, they looked at, similarly, you know, overall site layout, parking setbacks, general plan conformance, zoning conformance, and they were not supposed to really look at exterior design, and they didn't, they knew about the exterior design, but they were mostly looking at then the subdivision itself and whether it met those considerations. The Design Review Commission really is charged with looking at design factors, exterior design, interior layout, the landscaping, and the site planning. And so, there's a fair amount of overlap in terms of some of their considerations and issues, but the final action that they take is really separate, that one is the subdivision and one is the design.
Could I follow up on that? Do you mind?
No, no.
Would it be fair to say then that the planning commission determines like the footprint?
Yes.
And then, design, you would then look at how they use the footprint, basically?
Right, right. Sure, how it comes up out of the ground and how it looks on the outside.
If I may follow along. The planning commission made their approval with the full knowledge of this top of building being at 153.50.
Yes. They had to find that it was consistent with zoning, and they were well aware of the concerns in the neighborhood about the bulk of the building and the height of the building. And they found that it was 30 feet, and that it was reasonable to consider the exception due to the unusual circumstances.
So, sorry Cindy, so technically, we have an approved tentative map that can't be appealed, so maybe this is a question for Paul. I mean, are we in a little of a, middle of a muddy situation here? I mean, what if we were to uphold the appeal, but they already have an approved tentative map? What has the council just done? Or can we even do that?
Right. Well, under those circumstances, the applicant or the developer would have the authority to develop up to 12 units, and the lot would be subdivided in the way as shown on the map, but they would not be able to attain a height any higher than what would be...
I guess from my confusion, maybe that's where, it wasn't that an action of the planning commission? I mean, I view that as, that's what should have been appealed, was the planning commission's decision, not Mr. Gorney and the Design Review Commission. Am I missing something?
I'm trying to figure that out, too.
Yeah, it certainly creates an awkward situation.
Yes, because who determined the height and established, and maybe that's actually was my next question, and maybe, I don't know, I'm not sure if I can clarify it.
Back to you.
Can you explain the process for determining on, this is not a flat lot. It obviously, it's a topography that is very unusual. Well, no, it's not unusual in Walnut Creek, perhaps, where you have a slope, and how do we determine where we measure the height from on a sloping lot? What has been our practice in the past, and why, and how have we done it this time?
And was that a decision of the planning commission?
The, I will go into that a little bit. Again, I'm Sandra Meyer, and I'm the interim community development director. The height definition is in our zoning code, and it, the height is measured from existing or finished grade, whichever is lower, at any and all points on the site. However, there are exceptions in the zoning code for unusual circumstances on the lot in terms of providing for positive drainage, swales, or unusual topography. And so, and that determination as to whether or not those exceptions can be applied for unusual circumstances is made by the community development director. And in this case, based on the fact that the surrounding properties to the north and west, again, are four to seven feet higher, they've been padded up, and again, the property drops significantly from Homestead and sits in somewhat of a bowl, and does have to have positive drainage towards the existing drainage system, that those unusual circumstances did apply, and in this case, we felt that it was consistent with the zoning in terms of the height. Now, the planning commission, in approving the subdivision, confirmed that decision, because the only way they can approve that, the subdivision, is to find it consistent with the zoning.
You said confirm, but just so I'm clear, since I'm new, that means that they were aware that the community development director had looked at these issues, had, okay, thank you.
So, do I take your definition, first of all, can you explain positive drainage?
Well, in other words, it's, I mean, it's got a flow to, there is an existing drainage system currently on the site. It flows to the northwest. And, you know, in order to keep that drainage system working, as you know, along Homestead, there is drainage issues, and so they have to keep it sufficient and moving in the right direction. So, and then the other consideration in the site, obviously, was the preservation of the trees, which did not allow padding to the site.
I mean, in the perfect world, in that of civil engineers, is that you would have the road at a certain elevation, and then all the pads would be higher, and they would drain to the roads. Now, if we did that here, we would not only lose a lot of trees, we would have a structure that's far higher than what's being proposed.
Right.
So, it has been the practice in Walnut Creek to basically determine the height on a sloping lot?
Or, not so much on a sloping lot, but more on a lot that has, you know, that, because all lots are not flat, they, you know, they can have swales, they can have unusual topography on the site. Really, the height definition was really intended to address significantly sloping sites that slope all in one direction. That's why we measure it from existing or finished, whichever is lower, at any and all points, so that projects are proposed and will step with the hillside. However, you know, that's not a perfect world, and you don't, you know, you end up with lots that have these unusual deviations within the lot. And that's the case with this, and yes, there have been, those exceptions applied for other projects. Mercer was one, it had an unusual swale right in the middle of it, and another project that actually is probably not going to go forward, but was a project up on Springfield, which has significant grade up to the back, that was a proposed, live-work unit, that also, that's, and then those are just recent ones, but...
So, my final question on this would be, the planning commission is the one that affirmed the decision on the elevation of the lot?
Yes.
And that's part of the tentative map?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions at this time of the council? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing. And at this time, I'll ask the applicant to come forward, and have 15 minutes, and certainly you don't have to use it all, but you're more than welcome to.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Skrelin, members of the council. My name is Martin License, and I am representing the applicants this evening. I want to thank staff for their staff report, that was very thorough, and for their hard work on the project throughout this two and a half years that we've been, that we've been at this so far. We do agree with the staff report and the conditions of approval for the project, and we do feel that staff did an excellent job in explaining the height issue to the council. Our situation is unique because the surrounding landowners did fill in the properties on all three sides of us, leaving us in a hole essentially. Staff's interpretation literally levels the playing field, as it were. It allows us to build within the 30-foot height limit relative to the surrounding already built-up properties, but without jeopardizing the trees along the western boundary. We believe that this is the only fair interpretation of the ordinance, and that it has the added bonus of allowing us to save the trees to the greatest extent possible. It is my understanding that the Design Review Commission approval only is being appealed. As such, I'm going to limit my comments to those issues that were decided by the Design Review Commission, but if the council has any questions for me, or for Ken Alcock, our engineer, or Mike Holman, our architect, regarding any aspect of the design, we'd be happy to answer any of those questions for you. This has been a long process. It is an iterative process, and each iteration has brought us closer to the design that you see before you tonight. Mike will give the council a quick overview of the design, but before he does, I'd like to give just a brief history. As I mentioned, we started this process about two and a half years ago. The process included meetings with neighbors, five public hearings before the Design Review Commission, three public hearings before the planning commission, and we have taken very seriously every idea that has been put forth by each of these commissions and by the neighbors during this entire process. We were asked by the planning commission to put up story polls and volunteer to do so. This brought another round of changes to the design and a further reduction of the mass and the bulk of the building as a result. So, what we have now is that each time we've come before a commission, we've improved the project a little bit more. The table on page three of the staff report shows through the process that we've decreased the number of units from 15 to 14 to 12, and now that we're down to 12 units, we've reached the lowest density allowable under the general plan. We've steadily increased, or excuse me, decreased the average unit size and substantially lowered the footprint area from its original design. We've also included traffic enhancements on the property to improve traffic flow in the area and enhance the ratio of parking spaces to units. And as Mike will explain in further detail, each iteration has brought a reduced mass and bulk to the building. And frankly, at this point, we're proud of the result. It is a very elegant solution, in my opinion, to a very constrained site. We all have concerns about sensible development and smart growth. This proposal utilizes the space wisely, and it avoids the sea of asphalt effect that you get in many multifamily developments that, who has the parking on the outsides of the buildings. The lift system that's proposed, which hasn't been mentioned, allows us to stack parking, excuse me, and allows the parked cars to be hidden from view. There will also be new sidewalk installed along the frontage, providing safe pedestrian access to Walnut Creek Intermediate and other points to the north, and we're asking for no variances, and we're building to the minimum allowable density under the general Finally, we were able to save all but one of the existing trees along the western boundary, and that lone tree to be removed was destined to be removed at any rate, because it's leaning and not in a healthy state. This has been a long process, but the bottom line is, I believe the process has worked, and it's worked well. We heard from the neighbors, we heard from the commissions, and we've made changes along the way. The result may not have pleased everyone completely, but I believe we've come up with a successful project that will ultimately be an asset to the community. I'd like to now turn the microphone over to Mike Holman, who'll give the council a brief overview of the architectural features. That is, if there are no questions from the council, for me.
Any questions from the council?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow members of the council. My name is Mike Holman. I'm the architect for the project. I'm with the architectural firm of Holman Bologna here in Walnut Creek. As Martin has said, it's been a while. It's been two and a half, close to three years since we started this project. I won't take a lot of time. I'm sure everyone's pretty familiar with the project and all of the items that we're talking about architecturally. I was a little discouraged that Steve actually showed our original design. It was blown out of the water by the neighbors. It was blown out of the water by Design Review, and looking back on it, it should have been blown out of the water. It was a rather stark design. But it did, in fact, provide for the density that we, as the applicant, were looking for, quite honestly, and it did fill the envelope of the site in a very efficient way. But certainly, through the process of the hearings, of the neighborhood meetings, it became very clear, very quickly, that that was not an appropriate solution. Going back to the drawing board, as it said, over a period of time, and you saw that in the staff report, we reduced the project about 25% from where we started, both in size of units, size of footprint, size of overall buildings. We took into account the profile of the building, which was very much a concern by the commissions, including the planning commission, and after a series of meetings with planning commission before we even went back to Design Review, we removed two more units. We lowered the profile, as has been explained, at the corner of the private drive in Homestead, where we, we basically went down to one story over the parking garage in those two locations, where the building does in fact, excuse me, where the building does in fact step down at the drive and Homestead along that corner. Additionally, the last round of design and planning commission comments brought us to rethinking the concept of how we graded this site, and that has been a part of the discussion and the design effort from the very beginning. We all know about the trees, and from the very beginning, it was very clear we needed to save those trees. It was appropriate, the neighbors were very much in favor of doing that, the commission was very much in favor of that, and in fact, that's what was the strongest incentive for us to redesign. To do that, and I'll show you very quickly, the cross-section of the site, this is at the north property line, this is where the trees are, and you can see how much lower at that particular corner, we are basically down approximately seven feet from the adjacent property Ignacio Village units there. This is the private drive, this is Walnut Park Condominiums to the south. As you can see, we basically have this imaginary line of where that 30-foot point is, because that is, in fact, what is on the opposite side, Homestead Avenue. And that was the determination that was provided to us by staff. And that's what we adhere to, and that's what we've worked towards. And because of that, and because of those trees, we actually had to keep that. As I think, Mayor, you mentioned initially, if we were looking at it from a purely engineering and design standpoint, we would have filled all that. In fact, that was our approach at the very beginning. Remove the trees, fill the site to the adjacent properties, which is reasonable, and to Homestead Avenue. That would have filled the site approximately, you know, three to four to seven feet. And that's, in fact, what you see when you look at the property now. Because of the trees, because of the root systems, we could not do that. And so, that's where, you know, we have quote-unquote the imaginary, I say imaginary, line of where Homestead is on the rear of the building. Okay? Through a number of meetings, and certainly Design Review and Planning Commission on Homestead, you can see we stepped the building back. Again, from those, from the first designs that you saw initially, it was a pretty strong building. The walls were straight, they were tall, and we revised the building accordingly. There was a fair amount of discussion about privacy issues relative to our neighbors to the west, and I will point out that our building here with our windows, their building, and I should point out, their buildings only have windows in these inset areas here, facing in those two directions. There are no windows along those two wall surfaces. But we vary from, and this is a deck area, right here, right here, so that's why I've actually given a dimension. We vary from as little as approximately 38 feet here to as much as about 70 feet right there, just to sort of be in context of how far we are or... right there, just to sort of be in context of how far we are or the dimensional separation between those two areas of viewing. Likewise, on the units to the south of us, we range from, I can't read it there, we range from fifty-eight to seventy-three feet, from our wall line to their wall line, and you can see there's a series of changes there. So that's the separation to our building and their sightlines and views. There was a fair amount of discussion about our parking effort. All of our parking is underground. All of it is in the garage. Those that are meant to be for our residents, which are in the lift system and in a gated area, and then we also have an additional five cars, which is available for guests. But they are also on the property under the building. So we really thought that that was a very unique and good architectural solution for the site, given the constraint and shape of the site and its triangular shape. It provided for not seeing the cars, as has been pointed out, is not a sea of asphalt. In fact, you don't see any asphalt, which we thought was a good thing, and provides for an area of a fair amount of landscaping that you can see all the way around the building, which, quite honestly, is more than our adjacent property owners on both sides of us. There was discussion about traffic, and through the process with city staff and traffic and engineering, they had determined that it was very appropriate, and it was, in fact, agreed to by Planning Commission that we would widen the street, add the sidewalk improvements, and also have a left-hand turn lane that would provide for accessibility to all of the properties along Homestead. So to summarize, in case you have any, if you have any questions, but to summarize, would emphasize again, we've met all of the conditions of the zoning of the general plan. We are asking for no variances. We've had five public hearings with Design Review. We've had four public hearings with Planning Commission. We had, I believe, two, but for sure, we had a number of neighborhood meetings, of which one was very well-attended, and it was probably fifty to sixty people, neighbors, which we encouraged, and that was actually at the City Community Building, and it was attended by one of the city staff members, planning staff, so that, again, everyone was free to ask any questions, and a member of the city was there to, you know, review any comments that we might have said. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to entertain those, and hopefully, we can proceed.
Any questions for Mr. Holman, or Mr. License? None?
None.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, when were the story polls up?
During the Planning Commission hearings, I believe, which meant they were-
Was that in June?
Yes.
So the revised design, the story polls didn't reflect the revised, 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 revised design, the latest iteration of the design?
They reflected the second revision, not the very last two revisions, where we stepped the building corners down and also had a change of architectural elevations along this frontage. It didn't entertain that.
Okay. I'm looking at the chart that's on page three of the staff report, and it summarizes where it went from your first Design Review Commission hearing in March of '07, the total square footage of the property, it's of the land, the total square footage of the building, and then the number of units, average unit size, or the range of unit sizes, the total square feet. I think those are, that's the total square footage of all the units together. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if I divide the fifteen thousand, what is now fifteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-five square feet in the units by twelve units, I will get the average size?
Well...
Average, yeah.
Yeah, it'll be average.
But you got some two-story townhouses and some flats, yeah.
That's correct.
But if I, is that the number I can use to divide to get the average size? So that's, what I get is one thousand three hundred and thirty-one square feet?
That's correct. It's between fourteen and fifteen hundred feet. That's right.
No, I get thirteen hundred and thirty-one.
Well, included in some of those square footages are corridors and elevator, when we give the total square footage of that floor plate.
Okay.
So it doesn't exactly relate to the size of the living unit within the building itself.
Okay.
So actually, the average square footage of the living unit is slightly larger than you said.
Now, in the drawing that you have, that's actually closest to me here, I'm trying to follow the blues and the elevation differences. What I think I'm understanding is that at Homestead, that the lower of the two drawings, that line across is leveling the property to the height of, or the elevation of Homestead.
That's correct.
And at Homestead, the height of the building off of that blue line is what?
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet. So then the height of the building at the back, if you went straight across on that line, is also thirty feet above that line.
That's correct.
I'm trying to understand the difference then below that. From the blue line down to grade is?
Well, down to grade is about another eight to nine feet or so.
All right, and then you said the difference between the oak terrace elevation and grade is seven feet?
The oak terrace grade here, down to our property grade, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm assuming grade is where the plants are at the base of the tree.
That's correct, but it varies. From this end of the property here, it's down about four feet from side to side. The retaining wall right along that property line is about four feet. As it comes up to this point, it's about seven feet. So there's a slight variable from north to south. Yes.
Slight on the, okay.
That's correct, so, you know-
It's not just a simple slope?
No, it actually slopes in this direction. That's correct, to the northwest corner.
Which is why the water flows that direction.
That's correct. That's right.
All right, so the, at the illustration there, you said there's an eight-foot difference. So the building from grade that you're showing, what the section, cross-section that you're showing there, that grade to top is thirty-eight feet roughly, thirty-eight to thirty-nine?
That's correct. That's correct. We took that particular section. It's about right here, right in here.
But the difference between oak terrace and grade can range from four to seven feet?
That's correct. It's approximately four feet at this beginning of their driveway here to about seven feet at the end of the property down at that north corner.
So the net effect is somewhere between thirty-two and thirty, ooh, I'm going to do my math, thirty-two and thirty-five? Height between the terrace grade?
Yes. If you're talking about where terrace, you know, their driveway is, then yes, we are approximately from thirty-two to thirty-six or thirty-seven foot high relative to their driveway.
Depending on where you are along the driveway.
That's correct. That's correct.
So that's the third element of it, in a sense, is that...
And that is the highest roof of the building, other than turrets and things like that?
That's correct. And Homestead is generally flat along here. There's a slight, but it does, from about here, start sloping down here. In other words, and if you're standing on this private drive looking back, if you're standing at this corner, you're probably about four to five feet lower than you are at Homestead. That's why, as this thing is curving down, it gets lower. That's why, you know, the blue line here is directly, you know, flat relative to Homestead, and then all of a sudden, we're looking at it, and it's like, well, gee, Homestead is higher than the private drive over here. Yes, it is, because this drive slopes down towards the west.
One of the other questions is about the lifts. Have you used them before, such that you would know about noise, mechanical operation, et cetera?
Yes. As a matter of fact, there's a project that was approved and was built and is presently occupied off of Creekside in Walnut Creek. It's called Iron Horse Terrace, and coincidentally, we were the architects and designers for that project.
And what is the results related to noise of those lifts and how it resonates through a building, et cetera?
Well, from the outside, you don't hear them. You know, you're surrounded by a concrete garage is what happens. They have a decibel range of about forty decibels inside the garage. I mean, they're hydraulic. They're not chain-driven or anything. They're hydraulic, so it's not much different than you get with an elevator.
Any other questions? I have one related to, I know you're doing roadway improvements and sidewalk improvements. Are you striping all the way up to Ignacio Valley?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you.
We have the civil engineer here if he needs to give you some more technical answers.
Engineer, engineer, I understand that. Very easy. Thank you. Now it's time for the appellant.
My name is Jim Glassford. I am the appellant, and appreciate the opportunity to speak before you. I live on Melissa Court, which is probably about three hundred feet south of the planned project. Melissa Court empties out onto Homestead. We make a left-hand turn out of Melissa Court, and we drive three hundred feet, and we're right there where the project is. I do have some slides. In fact, I see that Steve Buckley has got them showing already, and I'd like to address the issue of whether Measure A is a proper issue for the Design Review Commission and the appeal of that decision. I think it is. It may well be that there's some confusion as to whether or not the jurisdiction over Measure A lies with the Planning Commission, or whether it lies with the Design Review Commission, or whether it lies with both of them. And I contend that it lies with both of them. Obviously, it lies with the Planning Commission, but let me flip down here. Whoops, wrong one, huh? And I'll explain why I think that it is something that is within the purview of the jurisdiction of the Design Review Commission. The very first finding of the Design Review Commission findings and decision was that the project will be in compliance with the zoning ordinance of the city of Walnut Creek. Well, Measure A is probably the majority part of the zoning ordinance of the city of Walnut Creek. As this slide points out, the finding is put in quotations in the very first part of the slide, and it's my contention that that finding is not correct. Measure A will be violated if this project is built. As you know, the project is zoned for M 1.5 multifamily residential use. The height limit for M 1.5 is thirty feet, according to the city ordinance that is cited there in the slide. The measurement, as has been mentioned before, is from all points on the site, from the base elevation to the top elevation. The height limitation will be violated, and admittedly so. The Planning Commission report of 10-9-08 on page four states, "The actual building height from the ground is about ten feet taller than this limit." So that puts the height of the building at a level of forty feet, according to this report and findings and decision of the Planning Commission. There is a savings clause in the zoning ordinance, and that savings clause provides that minor adjustments can be made to the zoning requirements of the thirty-foot height limitation. If we accept the findings of the Planning Commission, that there's a forty-foot elevation, that amounts to a thirty-three percent variation over the thirty-foot height limitation. I don't think that that is a minor adjustment. If we give meaning to the words "minor adjustment" or "minor" itself, "minor" means slight, small, negligible, and thirty-three percent really cannot be classified as slight, small, or The city ordinance also encourages that any variances be allowed and permitted, where it will permit reasonable building design. My contention is that a lower building could be reasonably designed and fit into this lot very well. Next, I'd like to talk about the story polls, and I think these story polls will tell you quite a bit about what this project will do to the area. First of all, before showing a picture of what the story polls look like from Homestead, this is what the lot looks like with the two houses on the lot presently. This house is a two-story house, and you can see how Homestead rises up a little bit in this picture, and the house sits down below the level of Homestead. But you can also see from this picture that there is a drop-off, significant drop-off from Homestead to the base elevation of the lot. Of significance in this picture is the structure in the background, which is part of the oak terrace condominium development. And if I can point that out to you, that would be on the west side of where the project is located. These two buildings are part of the oak terrace condominium development. Well, let's go, can I go back with this? I think it's important to, for reference, to take a look at the right center of the picture. You see an oleander bush with red blossoms on it. Now, when we go to the next slide, you'll see the oleander bush directly in the center of the photograph. You see the story polls with the horizontal lines across the lot, and in the background, you see the top of the building on the north side of the oak terrace development. I think this is a fair rendition of what the project will look like, at least from the rooftop of the project, and how it overwhelms the oak terrace condominium project on the west side of the proposed project development. The impact of a violation of Measure A is significant. It leads to a development of a massive, a bulky, a very high building in a neighborhood where the other buildings that surround it are not so massive, not so bulky, and not so high, and it sticks out, like the proverbial sore thumb. The mass of this building clashes with the neighborhood setting. It also aggravates the traffic and parking problems. You do have significant parking and traffic problems in the neighborhood. It also impacts the infrastructure. The project itself defines cramped living. The proposed project will consist of twelve units, sitting on merely 4.46 acres. There is a fluctuation in the estimated size of the buildable acreage. It ranges from 4.46 to 4.53. This is an area where I believe that there has been insufficient information provided to the commission for them to make their decision about the approval of the project. There is a little outside open space provided. Residents in this- Residents in this project will have little area to go to outside, leading to either them staying inside the project or going someplace else downtown perhaps, and that might be a good thing. There's little outside parking available for guests to come and visit. The hydraulic lifts for parking inside really define what cramped living is all about. That isn't what the neighborhood in the Homestead, Melissa Court area is about. It's not cramped living. It's a more spacious style of living. The mass of the project overwhelms the condos to the west. Those are the Oak Terrace condos. Both buildings are two stories. Both buildings are eight units, or four units each. Both of them are accessed by use of the easement that runs along the south side of the proposed project. And all units have adjacent garages. That is the nature of our neighborhood. Here is a picture that shows the Homestead, pardon me, the Oak Terrace condominium project. You can see it's a beautiful project. It's not cramped. It has plenty of space for the residents outside and also parking available in the back in garages. Also, this conflicts with the condominium project that is located to the north side of the proposed building. And again, these condominium developments, these buildings in that Ignatio Village project consists of two-story buildings. The units are surrounded by trees and walkways, and parking is easily accessible. Here's a picture from Homestead looking onto the Ignatio Village development, and you can barely see the structures because of all the trees that are around the buildings in the development. We have been fighting a traffic problem for all the years that I've lived in Melissa Court. I've been there since 1983. We have reached the point, and I think we've reached that point for some time, where traffic is at a limit, where we can really say that, yes, maybe it's reached the limit of tolerability. By putting this new project in at the Homestead Terrace site, the traffic problem will be exacerbated. One of the problems that we have on Homestead and Melissa Court is that we're trying to keep the thoroughfare of Homestead from turning into a major arterial for the traffic during commute hours. As you probably are aware, there is a turn limit at Ignatio and Homestead that prohibits through traffic from the outlined communities from making turns onto Homestead during the rush hour in the morning. And the same through traffic that comes through in the evening is prohibited from making a right-hand turn onto Ignatio Valley Road. This measure has helped considerably in ameliorating the traffic problems in our area. But with the new project, the traffic problems will be exacerbated. Part of the problem with the traffic in this project is that access to Homestead will be gained from the project going east out of the project, rather than through the easement to the south. And I can understand that the developer doesn't want to deal with the people that own the easement, and it'd be easier to just have the traffic empty onto Homestead. But that creates all kinds of problems with delaying traffic and congestion at that point, where the traffic empties out onto Homestead from the project. There's very little doubt that the project will be built by saving a number of the oak trees, but nevertheless, the mass and the bulk of the project is going to cramp the area. The vegetation that exists there now is going to be pushed back. Wildlife will not be allowed in the area as much as it is to this day. So I think that is a major consideration as to the quality of life. Perhaps some of you are aware that we had a flood in December of 2005 in the Homestead, Melissa Court area. And that raises another issue that I'm concerned about, and that is whether or not the infrastructure in the area for taking off surface water is adequate for the neighborhood. I don't believe it is. I know that with my neighbors, we walk the area. There is a culvert that runs to the west of Oak Terrace condominiums, and that culvert is constantly blocked during the rainy season. And we alert the crews from the city of Walnut Creek, who are very responsive, by the way, to come and remove some of the debris from it. But nevertheless, the culvert itself is really inadequate for flood protection. And that, of course, is the culvert where the waters from this project will be emptied into. That is a consideration. Once the project has been built, then it's going to be much more difficult to correct in any problems with the infrastructure in terms of fixing the flooding problem. This is a quotation from the general plan. And as I understand the general plan, there is...
Could you please wrap up, Mr. Glassford?
I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me go to my conclusion.
If I may interrupt, just so you know, within my, the council's purview to allow you a five-minute rebuttal period, so we will, if it's okay with the council, we'll allow Mr. Glassford five minutes after the public comment.
All right. Thank you. I just want to say that the project will violate Measure A, and for that reason, the project should be turned down. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Glassford at this time? No?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
At this time, we will gladly listen to comments from the public. Again, if there's anybody that's representing a group, they will be allowed 10 minutes, but we also ask that no other members of that group will speak. Otherwise, please try to keep individual comments to three minutes or less. And do I see anyone racing towards the microphone? How many people, if I may ask, can plan on speaking? Quite a few. If we don't mind, to keep the process moving, as you see, some space available. We could line up so we can move as rapidly as we can. And our first speaker?
Oh, and get your speaker.
And speaker cards are available either with Brad or at the back of the council chambers. And turn those in to Patrice Olds, please.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm perfect, thanks.
Good.
I'm Skip Walden. I live on Homestead Avenue. I listened to a lot of the comments here going in, and I began to wonder if we've got a catch-22 going on here about whose jurisdiction it is, whether the subdivision's already been approved or not. But the project did start two and a half years ago. And all along the process, we were told, "We need to comply with the general plan. You don't want to get an amendment to the general plan. You need to comply with the general plan." It's a horrendous problem to get it changed to the general plan. Now, I'm going to assume for the moment that we, that I believe we comply with the general plan. I don't. I don't think it applies equally to the quality of life provision. I think all elements of that general plan would be, are to equally apply. I don't think that. We focus primarily on the numbers, the things engineers like. You know, we can prove numbers. The, so here we are, and we get to the point where, where we say, at the final Planning Commission meeting, and by the way, if you go back a couple of commission meetings before, every one of the planning commissioners there at that meeting said, after looking at the story poles, said, "It's too big. The mass is too great. It's got to be reduced." Now, subsequent to that, there were some minor changes, and I would call them minor. The final Planning Commission meeting, one commissioner actually disapproved of the plan, saying it was too, too great. There were several other comments about the parcel seems to be inappropriately zoned. It just, this building is too large. And you've heard a lot of comments tonight about how this particular lot, the terrain, everything else, just, it's not an easy lot to build on. So the comment was, "It looks like this lot really shouldn't have been zoned M-1.5." We get to this, but, but we need to comply, and we've heard again tonight, we had to comply with the general plan, so here we are tonight to talk about a building that complies with the general plan, if you believe that. And like I said, I don't believe everything was applied equally in that, in that decision. But the, so here we are, asking, I think, you to take a look at that and whether or not there needs to be an amendment to the general plan for this particular lot, because it doesn't apply. And I, and I don't mean this in a nasty way, but when you agreed that Neiman Marcus ought to be here, there's a lot of talk about amending the general plan to allow that to happen. And subsequent to that, some things are going to probably happen where it may or may not fall within the general plan. When the residents want to change the general plan, we're told, "We can't, we can't, we can't." And so the Planning Commission approved it. And somehow, if that's a process, we need to find out how we appeal it earlier so that we can get the amendment to the general plan. And so I'm asking you to consider whether we can do that, because I don't feel, I think this lot is inappropriately zoned. And I think Mr. Simmons, who was there, would tell you this, that, I believe he might have said that, made that same comment. There were several commissioners made that comment. So anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity. It is a very nasty evening out tonight, isn't it? But many of us have turned out because we feel so strongly about our homes. Let me set another scene for you. Imagine that it isn't the start of almost winter, but that it is a beautiful spring day outside and the sun is shining. And on this beautiful spring day, I happen to have a little bit of free time, so I'm going to go outside with my Braille books and my tapes, and I'm going to have a little bit of relaxation. Now, I know that it's private and it's safe for me, until the moment when a visitor comes through the gate. And I have indeed surprised many a visitor outside, giving me the upper hand. The proposed project, now, what would change? What would be changed? First of all, the prolonged, all-day-long construction racket would make it almost unbearable to be out and sit out, and I really do not have a getaway car. Now, the extreme height of the building and the balconies would jeopardize my privacy and thereby my personal safety and well-being. And this is a deep concern. Another deep concern is the noise of the car lifts, which I don't think has been adequately answered. A noise that may not bother you too much during the day could actually wake you up at night. So privacy, peace, and personal safety are rights that we all should have. So I ask you to apply the true golden rule, to please scale down this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Could we please have your name for the record and address?
My name is Jan Knowles.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jan.
My name's John Havens. I live at the Oak Terrace condominiums. I'd like to kind of just continue with the frustration of the neighborhood that Skip began with. This decision to measure the height from where the city did measure it was made before the public was even involved. We never had a voice. This was a frustration through every single commission meeting we were at. And I'm, I feel terrible for the applicant. I think we could have been onto a nice building already, had there been an actual forum for discussing and coming up with solutions to these problems. But as it stands today, this building is, I'm the closest resident to it. It's nearly, as you can see on this closest thing drawing here, a full story above, in fact, it is, above my building, my second-story building, my balconies and my patio. Also, I think the city has a major problem in the ethics and the way they figure out how they're going to measure these projects. I've heard from other residents who've had similar situations in other projects in the city. And I'm wondering why we decide, if the citizens are to be a part of this decision, we decide on the east side, where there's one resident living, we measure from that side. Where on the north, west, and south side, within a 750,000-foot radius, there's probably 200 or more residents living, who will be affected by this building, which is out above the limits of the general plan. So that is, that's my frustration with the city. I'm sorry to say that I feel like I have not had an input into one of the most important decisions of this, which was the beginning of the development and where we measured the height from. So, thank you.
Mr. Havens, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Or a clarification?
Mm-hmm.
Can, maybe you can expand, and not that I'm trying to prolong the meeting, but I think it was an interesting point, that you said that the height decision was made before the public was involved. Can you elaborate for all of us, please?
I'm pretty sure that we, any meeting we had with the applicant, the design height of the building, the drawings were already made, as far as I know. The first meeting, there was no blank slate. There was no questions on where we should measure the height from. We were just given the drawings of that first building.
It's administrative. That was what Sandy said.
We'll get into that. I just wanted to hear, Mr. Havens. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Council members. Long time no see.
Yes. My name's Hardy Miller, and I am a 41-year resident of Walnut Creek. And I want to talk about aspects of the project. And the first is applying the general plan to this project. The members of the Design Review Commission and the Planning Commission were told, and under the impression, that 12 units was the minimum allowed to be approved unless we come to the council and get an amendment to the general plan. Now, they said that based on the 0.53 acres. And as you know, the buildable space is based on the net acreage. This lot is actually about seven tenths of an acre, but there's easements. There's the new easement, and then there's an existing easement, which is along the south side of the property. Staff and the applicant have chose, have chosen to ignore the existing easement, and so that's the 0.53. You multiply by 22, and that's 12 units. But as shown, really, this project, 12 is not the minimum. It could be less. There's a lack of, there was a lack of information during the Planning Commission and Design Review. As an example, at the October 15th meeting that's being appealed, there was insufficient drawings. One of the members said, refused to vote. He abstained from voting. There's not enough drawings for us to make an informed decision. In regard to the parking arrangement and the hydraulic lifts, the applicant was asked, or the applicant would not or could not provide noise-measuring information. We were interested in knowing, if you have one unit, or if you have three or four units, what would be the noise measure? Whether there'd be an echoing effect, a stereo effect, if two or three were going at once, the information just wasn't there. It wasn't provided. Design Review, Planning Commission was not able to make a decision. And as you know, in the general plan, there's very specific measurements that are required by the city. So that was not addressed. Photos. Jan, there was an issue to the staff for... Jan, there was an issue that staff, or staff was concerned about, sound sightlines, and asked Jan if they could come out and take some pictures. They came out, took the pictures, and then they were not provided to the Design Review Commission or the Planning Commission after they were taken. So again, this information was lacking. In regard to the sight polls, June 26th...
Can you wrap up, please?
Three minutes, it is fast.
Yeah, it does.
Well, yeah, I, I realize I have to finish, but I, I just would like to finish up with one comment, and that is, measuring the height, it's, how you measure is, it's more than just minor. With the way of measuring it, it's the enabler to get another level in this project, or another story in the project. So, it's not a minor issue, it's a major issue. So I would hope you would honor the appeal. Thank you very much.
I, I just wanted to ask you one more. You were talking about the pictures that were not shown. Did the pictures have the story polls in them? The ones that were taken?
No. And I haven't seen them either. No, the staff hasn't, you know, haven't seen them.
I didn't know if you knew. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Miller.
Mm-hmm.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Deborah Carboni. I live on Homestead Avenue. And I just wanted to reiterate what we've heard tonight about how massive this project is, how, how tall this project is. It's large, it's so large, it takes up a very large footprint. These have been problems that we, that we as the neighbors have had for the last two years. People have shown up at every single meeting and complained about the same things over and over and over. And the most telling thing of all during the whole two-year process has actually been the story polls. And people were absolutely shocked when they saw those story polls. I was shocked. People on the, the boards and the commissions, some of them, a few of them did see the story polls and were quite shocked over that. My recollection was that the, the story polls first went up, I, I believe, when we were at Design Review Commission. And so a few of those people saw that and were really shocked. And I wrote a letter to the city staff, wanting to make sure that those story polls would stay up before the, I guess after that it went to the Planning Commission. I, I might have, I might have my stories wrong, but it, some people saw it from one group, and the, the other group who was going to hear about the matter next had not seen it. I requested that, that they all be informed that the story polls were up so that they had the opportunity to see the story polls before they were, were removed. And that did not happen. And so then, when we went to the next meeting before the next group of individuals, they had not seen the story polls. And even though there are some pictures that were shown to you tonight, you, you have absolutely no idea. Those pictures do no justice whatsoever. This project is massive. It is huge. It is so tall, it's overbearing. It is, it is not consistent with the neighborhood at all. I also remember being struck, hearing the architect talk at some point, after they had reduced the size of everything, talking about the square footage of the individual units, which is much larger than the square footage of my own house, which is 1,600 square feet. My house is sort of average, you know? My neighbors and other homes that I'm in in the neighborhood are kind of the same as mine, around 1,600 square feet. Some are smaller, some might be a little larger. But some of the units in this development are so much larger than the houses, the single-family homes in this neighborhood. It just, it can be much, much smaller. The units don't have to be as large. The, you know, the parking doesn't have to be such that we have to have these hydraulic lifts with one car on top of another. There can be a little bit of open space where people can actually go outside and have some space. There's only room on this project for a few cars, for people who are going to be visitors, which means that all these other cars are going to be parking on Melissa Court and some of these other areas. So I just want to reiterate the, the massive, massive size and the huge, huge height that is overbearing compared to the neighbors. Thank you.
I'm Roger Parkinson, a 37-year resident, year-old resident, or year resident of Walnut Creek. So where would you measure the height of the ceiling? Would you measure it from the top of this podium, or would you measure it from the floor on a, you know? Anyway, I'll just give you a little something to think about. Anyway, I still have concerns about the Homestead Terrace condominium project. I think we have all made it very clear that what our neighborhood wants is a design that fits the location. The, the applicant wants much more than what can reasonably be made to fit on this site. That's the gist of it. In my opinion, this building, site cannot support a three-story structure without removing the unstable soft clay soil down to bedrock. It has been determined, has it been determined from an engineering perspective? I don't know. And also, are we in jeopardy of, of, of the root system of the oak trees? Stormwater drainage has been a problem over the years in our neighborhood. The water table is close to the surface. I'm not far from this, this area, a couple bucks down. My water well is five to six feet from the top. That's, that's the water table. And I've been around to many other water wells in the area. Because '79, '80, and '81 summers in that area, we were going through a drought, and many new wells were being drilled, drilled, you know, private wells. And, and, and the water was all, always within, you know, that close. Sometimes closer, even three to four feet on, on some of the wet years. An eight-unit, two-story design could be built without the tremendous excavation work required for the current design. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Where do you live exactly?
I'm on Homestead Avenue, and I'm, and I'm...
Homestead and where on Homestead?
1111.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jill Keeler, and I decided to come up because there wasn't a picture of the story polls on the south side. And I'm in Walnut Park, and I'm, I'm actually, the balcony that's directly across, I look over the private driveway, directly across the current opening into the property. And when I, he talked about space between the, where the new project is going to be and our condos, where our condos, there's the private driveway. And I'm thinking he might be counting those, those feet. Because when I saw the story polls, the story polls are close to the, to the other side of the private driveway. And so I don't, they were talking about building trees in other meetings I've come, and I'm like, how are you going to fit those trees in, in not that much space? I don't know. Plus, it takes many years for trees to grow. And when I really got involved in this is when I saw the story polls, because I looked outside my balcony, and all the units along that driveway, our balconies or our, or the patios down below from our living rooms are all along that driveway. We, we, it, it was just like a giant wall. I would have no more view. I would look out. The story polls are just huge. And, and it's just, it's not, I'd see a wall. And, you know, eventually, maybe trees will be planted and grown, but it will take many years for them to grow. So, thank you.
I'm sorry, can you point out where you live on the site plan?
This is Homestead?
Yes.
So I, where are the openings? I'm right here.
You live in the driveway?
No, I'm, I'm...
I'm sorry, no, I knew you didn't, but, okay. Thank you very much.
Mike Frederick, good evening. I used to live in Lakewood and was asked to follow this proposed development. I've been to most meetings and have done so. I agree with you, Mayor, that it would be great... Oh, before I get started, I'd just like to say this. If any of you cares anything about this city, I'd ask you to please read Ed Dimick's comments. I agree with you, Mayor, that it would be great if the city had the flexibility to place height around town where it would have the least impact. Unfortunately, the community sought height limits and staunchly defends them because we obviously can't trust a city council that renounces its own general plan to promote four-story condos on parkland in a scenic corridor. Forget about meeting Neiman Marcus state-mandated EIR requirements. We can't seem to follow a general plan that we authored less than three years ago. We don't trust you. We don't trust your redevelopment income-dependent appointees or your redevelopment income-dependent hirees. On Neiman Marcus and promotion of redevelopment, Ms. Barone advises the community that the general plan is, quote, "a living, breathing document," unquote. On Homestead, however, it's a biblical excuse, even though the city doesn't follow it. Your general plan talks about weighing elements equally. In practice, the planning commission tells the public that since the applicant has the minimum number of dwelling units per acre, it's conforming and therefore is good to go. There is no discussion of sensitive transitions between land uses. You've got high-density city zoning on one side of the country lane and county R-10 on the other. It's exactly the same irresponsible, non-conforming redevelopment you're proposing in Tice Valley. This thing looms over the street and changes the character of the entire neighborhood. Design Review Commissioner McDonald, the only design review commissioner that cared enough to actually go out there and look at the story polls, voted against this. While your general plan specifies dwelling units per acre, considerations like massing are also covered. They are described in discretionary terms that your redevelopment-laden commissions ignore. Specifically, the unit size proposed is about 50% larger than single-family homes and condos on the street, resulting in an FAR that is much higher. Such concern was expressed by all planning commissioners, particularly Bob Simmons, before some sort of closed-door meeting obviously transpired to take this out of the realm of the public and into the private. There is no general plan argument that a developer can produce whatever massing he chooses as long as he gets the dwelling units per acre and setbacks right. Such responsible discretion was ignored as usual. It is why we have height limits and should probably design further constraints on a commercially-owned government that forms a consensus of the misinformed and disinterested through yard signs. The handout is a letter I wrote to Darcy Krim in expressing disgust at the applicant's and staff's conduct. I have one more sentence. I don't believe I've ever written to a commissioner. That says something. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frederick. Any questions? No. Thanks.
So, thank you for your comments and your passion on the subject. I appreciate it. So I'm just curious as to whether you attended any of the public sessions around, either through Design Review or through the Planning Commission? This has come up a couple times, and you seem like a good person to ask.
Virtually all of them, yes.
So, you're, these points that you make up in particular around the transitions between the way the zoning has happened at the city level and the county level, and I think your statements were something in the lines of a disregard between the connection. Can you elaborate on that? Did that come up in, in the Design Review or Planning Sessions?
No, that's, that's just something that I've noticed, that we seem to have an awful lot of things that are coming up right on the bounds of what is county and what is city. And it seems to me that good planning inside the city limits, you can't tell when you're in the city and when you're in the county. So if it applies in the city, it probably works in the county as well. And so you've got county land that looks one way, and you've got four-story condos across the street that are in the city. And there ought to be, this transition that our general plan talks about ought to apply, I think.
Thank you.
Let me ask you a question.
Now, the, across the street properties that you're referring to, are these the ones on
Cragmont Court?
No, this would be just across Homestead.
Across Homestead?
Yeah, it's not directly across the street. You've got to go down, you know, a few feet, but it's pretty close. Yeah.
So these are beyond...
They're beyond, they would be farther to the south.
They're farther to the south?
Yes.
So where the single-family homes start, on Homestead?
Yeah, exactly, yeah. It's not directly across the street.
Directly across the street is a hill.
Exactly.
That goes up a hill?
It's an open space.
Into Cragmont Circle, which is a part of the county and is owned R-10.
Yeah. I believe, I believe the hill is county also, isn't it, across the street?
Hmm, not...
I, I don't know, I don't, I think it's an academic question.
But across the street, technically across the street is...
A hill.
An undevelopable, an unde, a hill like this.
Yeah, it's not looking into anyone's house. It's just the whole notion that you've got this piece of property that, in essence, is, you've got county on the other side of the street. And basically, the rest of the city property that's on down on that side of the street looks like the county. But we're seeing at the, at the boundaries here between county and city, the city's going in one direction, and the other, everybody else on the street is saying, "We like our country lane," and is doing something else, and they ought to kind of come together.
But directly across the street is not single-family homes?
No, it's a hill.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name's Joyce Wilson. I live at 1015 Homestead Avenue, which is down a ways from this, but we're all affected. And I hope you hear, have heard tonight the frustration of the neighbors. Usually, I've been to most of the committee meetings, the commission meetings, the meetings that the developer held. Usually, this room is packed for those meetings. Tonight was kind of a bad night, I think, so, or you'd see more people here even than you do. The neighbors have repeatedly tried to work with the developer in specifying what we feel is, is right for the overall project. And we're frustrated because this 12 units, it has to be 12 units, but what we've been saying is, the size of the units, then, needs to go down so that the size of the project goes down. And the story poll thing comes up again because Design Review people pretty much, that commission saw the story polls, because they came up, they went up during that period and they were told, and they went out there. Because of that, the Design Review Committee kicked it back, or, excuse me, the Planning Commission kicked it back to Design Review and said, "This is not right. It's not, it's too massive, it's too big, you've got to do something." Design Review did nothing. They didn't go out and see the story polls to see what it was like. They just had their meeting and tossed it back to Planning Commission. We're all frustrated, I can't tell you. They did decrease the overall square footage a little bit, but not enough to, to fit into the neighborhood. We feel that there's no green area for the children to play, there's no place except, you know, garage and living space. There's not enough visitors parking, they're going to be, they're going to be all over the streets, and there's no room on Homestead. If you've been down Homestead, you know there's no room to park. We feel like that the footprint of the building is going to go over the oaks, the, the roots of the oaks, and they're at jeopardy, even though they've said, you know, that they're trying to save them and everything. We feel like they may not be saved. And then the noise pollution from the car lifts and the garbage recycling pickup, no one mentioned that tonight. There's 24 cans that are going to be in one little area, and whoever's right there is going to be hearing a horrible mess every time garbage day comes. The project is too tall. We've talked about the height limits already, and it's too massive for our neighborhood. It's just too big.
Can I ask you to wrap up, please?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
It's, it's with the condo projects that brought our neighborhood into, the people to go up in arms. It will be a good investment for the developer. We feel like, you know, they're, they're going to benefit from this, but the citizens of Walnut Creek are not, and they don't care about our feelings. I hope the city council is listening to its citizens, and I feel that you have an obligation to do that.
Thank you.
As the city council.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Ed Dimick, 1251 Shepherd Court, which is not in this area, but I'm speaking tonight as a founding director of Citizens for Better Walnut Creek, which is the organization that sponsored Measure A and went out, got the signatures, got it passed by the voters. This particular interpretation of Measure A bothers us very much. When we presented this to the voters, we had not anticipated defining the height limits in the way that it has been, excuse me, an organization would be 10 minutes. Thank you. That you would be measuring the height from a nearby higher road than from the elevation itself. Happened to have a copy of the agenda for the Planning Commission, or the staff report to the Planning Commission... to the planning commission from October 26, 1989, in which the city looked at this issue and came up with a definition of base elevation, where it's measured from existing or finished grade, whichever is lower, and that the standards in the multiple-family districts are not to exceed 30 feet, whether or not parking is included in the same building, and height is to be measured from existing grade or finished grade, whichever is lower. No mention is made about measuring it from an adjacent road which is higher. And I'm not sure if you have realized or fully appreciated, staff or anyone else here, the implications of this precedent throughout the entire city. There are lots and lots of properties that are like this, where you have varied elevation, where you have a road above the lot which is higher, in which a lot of people are going to say, "Wow, if they can do that there, we can put up a much bigger building, a much higher building than what we're currently allowed." If you consider a lot of hillside lots throughout the city, you could put up several-story building in a single-family lot, this zone for 25-feet height. Please think of the implications of this precedent. It's a very dangerous precedent that is being set with this particular development. Whether it's 40 feet, as the attorney for the neighborhood, Mr. Glassford, mentioned, or whether it's 35 feet adjacent to the properties to the west, either one is greater than 30 feet. Insignificant, I don't know how each of you are various heights, the lowest measurement is about how tall you are. I don't know if you consider yourself standing erect to be insignificant or not. To me, that's quite a major amount, not an insignificant amount. So, that was all I had wanted to say on the height. Just one thing personally that, there it goes again, that I'd noticed as an individual listening to the testimony. The hydraulic mechanism for the lift is going to be in the basement, and this is a floodplain which floods every few years. I'm wondering how those mechanisms are going to work in water. But anyway, that's all I had. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Dimick? Because I know I have one, if I could ask you. How would you, let's say we filled in the site, and I know this is hypothetical, but I respect your opinion on this stuff, Ed. If we were to fill the site to basically a level site, could we then go 30 feet above the new finished grade?
Yes.
Or we could?
Yeah, but it would only be a two-story building then, it wouldn't be three, I believe.
But they could then put an underground garage.
Pardon?
You could put an underground garage.
You could?
Okay.
Yes. It would not be a particular, well, neither one is a particularly pleasant proposal. But then you have the problem with the trees.
Understand.
You would then be violating another part--
Understand.
But anyway.
That was his hypothetical.
Yeah, in your perspective. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Mary Borv, and I live on Melissa Court. And I just have a quick thing here regarding the traffic and the lifts. I have never truly gotten an answer on how these lifts are going to work. I actually own a lift, and I know how noisy they are. We only run it during the day, maybe two, three, four times a month, because it's a recreational car that's on that lift. I cannot imagine having that noise going with 12 units and having a car lift where there are two cars constantly being rotated. I am assuming that most of these condos here are single-family dwellings, will have two-family incomes where you have two cars coming and going. The question is, it's never truly been addressed, is will one unit have a top and a lower portion to the lift, or will they share with the neighbor? So, if they need to get a car down, would they have to go to their neighbor and ask them to switch, or will they have two there? And if it's not convenient, and the husband and wife or whoever is living in the unit, they need a car, it's not convenient to take that car down or get somebody to move the lower car, so they will park out on Homestead, or say they just won't come in and use the lifts. Now, Homestead has changed in the last month or so, or six weeks. As you are coming in off of Ignacio and you turn south on Homestead, the first, I don't know how many, 30 feet, 40 feet, has now been painted red. So, we have lost that parking there, which the condos on the corner were using. In that time, our street parking on Melissa Court has increased. Whether, I don't know if it's coming from there, or if it's the increase with the holidays, friends, family, whatever, coming around. I can't imagine now that if we have these lifts to accommodate 12 units, it's just not convenient to use them, plus they're noisy, they're just not going to use them. I don't know how successful it was down, Mr. Holman talked about the unit downtown Walnut Creek. It would be interesting to have some facts on that. Are they truly used or not? So, anyway, lifts are not convenient and they're noisy. The overflow then comes into our court. Not only that, it was addressed tonight, there's not a lot of play area for kids, so if you have kids there now, where do they come? They come to Melissa Court. We're a quiet little lane, and we already have the overflow from the other streets, the busy streets, Homestead, Marshall, they come down there.
Thank you.
So, the only thing I would ask is that, because this does set a precedent for the rest of Walnut Creek, that you please consider this and make it conducive not only to the neighborhood, but please make the neighbors happy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Seeing no other public comments, the applicant now has a five-minute rebuttal period.
Thank you once again, Mayor Skrel and members of the council. I do appreciate and have, and we have appreciated, all of the input from the neighbors on this project and have worked over the last couple of years to incorporate as many of these concerns and address as many of these concerns as possible. I would like to discuss a couple of the issues that have been brought up this evening, starting with the height limitation. As I mentioned, this, we do agree with staff's interpretation of this height, and as was pointed out by Mayor Skrel and his question to Ed Dimick, if the site actually had been filled to street level, then there would be an allowable 30-foot height limitation on the site. We're asking to take advantage of that, but also asking to take advantage of the opportunity to save the trees in the back. I think this presents a reasonable compromise to do both. It is an adjustment, however, it's not an adjustment as viewed from Homestead Avenue itself. Regarding the story polls, they did look massive, and they were a tool that we used to judge the mass and the bulk of the structure. But they also overstated the fact because they were placed, the bottom of the poles were placed in the hole, making the entire structure look larger than it really is going to look. It's going to actually be placed on top of some fill. There were comparisons to Oak Terrace, saying that there is more space, but respectfully, judging from the picture that I saw, most of that space was taken up by the asphalt and the parking areas that we don't have at this point. We're putting the parking underneath the building and taking advantage of that opportunity to add more landscaping to the site. Regarding the traffic problem, this is, we are only talking about eight additional units here. This is not, we're not talking about 12 additional. There are four existing. We're adding eight. And if you look at the traffic counts, the significance pales when you consider that there are only eight additional cars during the peak hour. Again, the zoning has been, we are consistent with the zoning in the general plan, which have been in place since at least 1989. The parcel was purchased in reliance on the general plan and the zoning, and we are, again, not asking for any variances and asking to develop this property accordingly. Also regarding the garbage, and I might have to put Mike on the spot on the garbage collection, but the collection was changed, the collection area was changed, and the methodology was changed in response to comments that were received during the planning commission stage. And I will ask Mike, if he can, to give me some more detail on that. And if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them, and I'm going to turn the microphone over to Mike. Thank you.
Okay, Mike, you've got a minute thirty to go.
Thank you. Thank you. In our last design review and planning commission, we added a, basically a pocket so that refuse companies could park their vehicles. There's a staging area and underground garage where all of the cans and recyclable containers are that will be brought out, you know, for pickup and so forth. So, there is area outside of the drive area, drive lanes for everyone to get by. About the lifts, there's been a lot of comments about the lifts. I should say that, yes, they will be appropriated to the owners for the two lifts, but I will say that one doesn't wait for the other. That's why you actually have a pit. There's a combination of pit and extra height in the garage, so they sit on top of each other in tandem. You're never waiting for another person to remove a car to use one of those lifts, whether it be on the top or on the bottom. They're independent of that from the driveway. So, they work individually. You never wait or depend on another owner or even your own partner to move a vehicle out of the way, as compared to a tandem car or something like that. There was discussion at the very beginning about the privacy issues. Again, our neighbor, Ms. Knowles, has pointed out to us a number of times, and in fact, we removed all of the windows at her, I believe she lives in this particular unit in this corner, and we removed all the windows along that. And that was brought up both by design reviews, staff, and planning commission.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, and you might have to ask Ken from, is it Maloney, for this question. I need to understand the soil stability question that came up, the storm drainage and the capacity of the storm drainage system and how that would work. But before you leave, is it 24 cans? It's 12 units. How many trash cans will there be?
Without garbage and recycling.
But does each unit have its own?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it required that each unit has its own?
No.
So, you could do--
And we're basically in communication with the disposal company, and they haven't actually made up their mind what kinds of containers. And of course, it all relates to numbers of times of pickup during a week. They can accommodate any of those. And usually, in an urban setting where you have multi-unit buildings, that's in fact what happens.
So, then I, it's okay, I do have some questions for--
That's fine.
The engineer from Maloney--
Hi, my name's Ken Alcock. I'm from the Civil from Maloney and Associates. A geotech report was prepared for the site. We're not really overexing the site, we're pulling out a whole bunch of dirt because we have the trees there. We're locked in with the grades where the trees are sitting there. So, we've got some removal of dirt and stuff, but we're basically coming in at that grade. We're not going down 12 feet type of thing, but we're going to run into any groundwater issues. And then real quickly, we are not in a floodplain, as stated by--
So, just, I'm sorry, Cindy, just, because that was one of my questions. So, thanks. So, it was asserted, or a concern was expressed about flood potential in this area, and you're saying that based on your expertise, you don't see that as a concern here?
It's not only my expertise, but we have FEMA maps that we rate, that are rated for the area, and it shows that we're out of the 100-year floodplain.
What about your storm drainage system? Is that adequate? Are you improving it, or what is your opinion on it?
I feel that we're improving it because we're also adding C3. We're also cleaning the water that is coming off of the site, off of the roofs and everything. So, it's making into swales. We are actually slowing down the storm drain system and the water runoff coming through. So, when it makes it back to the corner where there's an existing pipe system there, it's actually slowing everything down in there. A lot of the water off of Homestead because it's unimproved, and it's just edge of pavement and water's pouring off Homestead and onto our site. We're rerouting some of that water, so it's not over-innating our site at this point.
How are you going to reroute that water and not have it pouring down onto this property or continue to do that?
Well, there's going to, as we widen, we're going to have curb and gutter out on Homestead. We've also created a kind of a high point at the mid, if you look at the whole project, we've kind of created this high point at the midpoint there, where we're actually taking water back towards the Ignacio area and getting water out towards the Ignacio area away from the inside of Homestead.
Okay.
Can I jump in here, Cindy, on the drainage? I don't believe in our packet we had drainage plans, maybe we did.
Well, you probably didn't because it was part of the tentative maps, the middle and the fine-grained drainage.
Obviously, this site is a low spot--
It's a slow condition, correct.
It's collecting water. So, are we transferring any water off of your newly-developed site, if this is approved, to any adjacent properties?
No, not at all.
Okay.
No, we can't. We can't do that. I can't send drainage across to another property. I have to accept and treat our drainage.
Are there any, are you contributing flow to any drainage structure that you or the city has found to have insufficient capacity?
One of the conditions with Scott Wickstrom with engineering was that we were to take a look at the downstream, immediate downstream issues, where there is water just past a private drive going downward here to the right, that there's two catch-based inlets that sit in that corner there. We're to look and see what kind of flooding issues are there and work with him to resolve that.
So, the, by that response, should I conclude that the drainage issues are not completed, or the final drainage plan is still evolving? How would you characterize it?
No, our drainage plan is complete. We're still in design at this point. We've still got some issues that we're working with engineering to take a look at those two catch bases at this point. But at this point, Scott Wickstrom doesn't see a problem with that.
Okay. Thanks, Cindy.
There was also a question about the potential for flooding of the garage, since it would be lower than the street level. You may have already said this, so in fact, can you address how you will prevent that in the design of this, or how the design of this building is intended to prevent that, I assume?
Well, inside the actual garage areas, we have drainage inlets that we are catching any water that may be coming in into the garage. As you enter the garage and you come down that seven-and-a-half to 8% slope, we have great inlets that are catching water, any water that's coming off of rain that hits the ground and comes down. So, we're capturing that before it gets into the garage. As safety measures, we always put drainage inlets inside the garage just for safety backup if there's too much water that happens to come in. But inside the lifts, in the sump areas, we have to put drainage inside there for whatever water may get in there. So, I have to go ahead and have to get that water out of there if water were to come in there at that point.
So, are those automatic, automatically activated if there's water that--
No, they're just, they go out into, actually, the ones that are inside the lifts are tied into the sewer system because of the oil and everything that goes in there. So, those are actually tied into the sewer system, which is a lower elevation. Those will flow out.
Now, can I ask you about the oak tree roots? Are you the right person to ask?
Go ahead and give it a shot, but I might send it over to the landscape architect.
Oh, is there another one of those here, too? There have been some questions about protecting of the oak tree roots. How will we keep those trees from being damaged? When I went out and looked at the site, it seems, and I was a bit amazed, it seems that they raised, the oak trees seem to be older than anything around there.
Yes, I think it was, they're near 60 years old or something like that.
How is it that we allowed building, I mean, asphalt, concrete, I mean, aren't the other units that are behind it at Oak Terrace also damaging these oak tree roots?
These trees, in my civil side of things, are amazing because these trees had a retaining wall built around them also. I mean, these trees have been put through quite a bit, asphalt and-- I mean, these trees have been put through quite a bit, asphalt and retaining walls coming on the other side of the project. We're not affecting, I mean, our development side, you know, I've got 11, 12 feet that I'm staying away from these oak trees as prescribed by the arborist. So we're trying to stay as far away from these oak trees. They've survived. We're not going to interrupt them with our development. We're trying to stay as far away from them. We're not putting any fill on top of the root system to keep them intact.
Okay. Thank you. You've answered my questions. Thank you.
Solid. Any other questions, Kish, Sue? Okay, Mr. Glassford, would you like to respond? Up to five minutes, please.
Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. I would like to address one point that was brought up by the engineer concerning the water drainage. Perhaps I don't understand how the drainage operates here, but my understanding is that, and I'll go over to the drawing.
There's a microphone right there on the, if you'd like to carry that with you, right behind you.
Perfect.
At the drawing, there is a drainage culvert that runs on the western side of the Oak Terrace condominium project. It comes down here, and then it goes underground beneath the Ignatio Village condominium project, and then runs into a larger culvert that runs down the center of Ignatio Valley Road. Right now, I don't know that there's any drainage on this property that takes water from this and contributes it to the overall drainage system. I would think that the surface water runs somehow over to this culvert and then is dropped into the drainage channel underneath the Ignatio Village project. So somehow, when this is built, the water has to be transferred to this culvert. That's what I understand. I could be totally wrong on that, but...
Not yet.
That is the concern that I have about the drainage system. I think the drainage system needs to be fixed before this project is developed. I have had many concerns pass through my mind as I've listened to my neighbors talk about the issues that concern them, and they have eloquently addressed those issues. And in the interest of brevity, because I think brevity is the better part of valor, I'll turn it over to you, and rest assured that your judgment will be exercised properly. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask another question?
Certainly. Of Mr. Glassford or of the --
Is it Alcott or Allcott? Alcott. I'll get, I'll see if I can get your question answered. Perhaps you can go to the drawings and show us how you're going to do the drainage system because clearly you're not, I don't think you're proposing to just plop something on the land.
No, no, not at all. There's actually an existing drainage system that is at the corner of our property that everything that we've got is going into on-site. It's back here. This system actually does go under Ignatio Village and then dump ultimately out into a channel out there for Wolfman Creek. So this is actually the low point, obviously, for the entire site, so naturally, that's where all our drainage is going, and it's going into here. That's on-site. Obviously, this stuff, high point, we've got stuff going back here and down over to here.
So it's going into a subterranean?
It's going into a pipe system.
Pipe system?
And then ultimately into the channel.
And is that where, oh, maybe you're going to ask that question. Is that where you will then be connecting to with all of the drainage that you'll be putting into the project?
Correct.
Or proposed to put into the project?
Correct. That's where all our drainage will be going to. That's where the majority of it is going now.
And so what is the size of that pipe system that's currently serving the property?
It's a 12-inch pipe that comes out from that corner.
So what is the anticipation, or maybe I have to, Scott Wikstrom?
I don't think Scott's here tonight.
Is the capacity of the 12-inch pipe adequate for the 12 units and?
That depends on the roughness coefficient and the slope of the pipe, man.
Thank you so much. I'm seeing squared.
So part of our analysis, we have to run, we have to do a hydrology analysis of where that's going. And there is a time of concentration of how long does it take a drop of water to hit the roof or hit the ground that ultimately makes it to the 12-inch pipe. And with our C3 system where the water comes to a cleaning planter, if you would call it, perks down to the bottom and then into a pipe, this slows the entire system down before the water. If we were just to pave the whole thing and drain it right to there, a drop of water that hit from one side to the other would go into the system very quickly and flood and overwhelm the system. Due to what we're doing, we're slowing everything down, putting it to C3 planters, cleaning the water essentially, and then letting it flow over to that pipe, where there's more capacity there than we need.
So you're basically metering it a little bit better?
It meters. It's a, yeah, that's not the intent, but that's what ends up happening.
Yeah.
I guess I have one more question. We're not in the, that's such a low area, I'm surprised that's not in the floodplain?
Yeah.
The lowest area is about, what, 117.5 or something?
We are out of the 100-year and 500-year floodplains. We're in flood zone X per the FEMA floodplain.
That's the existing grade.
That's existing right now.
So obviously, if you're going up, you're fine.
We're going to go up, we're going to be even further out of it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No. I think the public hearing is closed. We'll bring it back to council. Any questions of staff before we offer our comments?
I have a number of them.
I'm guessing you'll take care of most of them.
Oh. I first like to ask about the general plan rules related to noise levels. Is that chapter six or seven? I cannot remember of the general plan, but I do know that there are allowed decibel levels. Can someone look those up for me? Or do you know them off the top of your head?
The exterior noise level for residential properties at the property line is 60 dB. I'm not sure it's dB or dB something, but it's an average weighted noise system over 24 hours, and that's at the property line, 60.
Six oh?
Six oh.
So are we correlating correctly that if the equipment is 40 decibels inside, and is that a rating, and that's a rating that is from the manufacturer, then by, at the lot line at the exterior, it would be meet the 60?
Yes. That's the conclusion that has been made, yes.
Okay. Can you clarify what are the parking requirements for these units, and both in terms of guest parking and owner parking?
We don't have separate requirements for owner. It's based on the number, the parking requirement is based on the number of bedrooms per unit. And I'm going to defer to Steve on --
I'm sorry, I didn't mean that.
Based on the number of bedrooms, right.
I look straight ahead now when I see you because I moved. If I was sitting back over there again, I would be looking straight at you.
Each of the units is two-bedroom, two-bath, and so by providing two parking spaces for each unit, they meet the zoning requirement. And then they are, in addition to meeting the zoning requirement, they are providing the guest parking spaces in recognition, I think primarily, that the lifts are not really conducive to guests, but that by having independent parking for five guests, including a handicap space, that that more than meets a requirement.
So our residential parking requirements are one space per bedroom?
No. It's, there's sort of a ratio, slightly, slightly less.
One and three quarters car.
I can't remember. So the 24, the 29 exceeds?
Yes, it well exceeds the zoning requirement.
And have we done any calculations in terms of the distance, the frontage distance that will now have curb and gutter, which would conceivably become parking, on-street parking, or is that?
That would be a red curb, I would think.
Why?
Homestead?
Why, and are we assuming it's a red-curbed zone?
The project frontage actually would be red-curbed because of the turn lane that's being provided. So within the 40-foot pavement with, there's two travel lanes wide enough to also accommodate bike route and turn lane in the middle. So there would be no parking on the immediate frontage, and there isn't any right now either.
Okay. The, there was a comment by Mr. Frederick, who just left, about the zoning being inconsistent with the residential zoning for the county. In your presentation, did you have a zoning map for that?
No, I did not. The planning commission and design review commission did. I'm sorry, I didn't have it tonight.
Was the idea, I guess basically the question is, is this appropriate transition with the size and the?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
The zoning for this property and for all of the apartments and condominiums that surround it within 300 feet are all M1.5. And then the single-family residential is, as was mentioned, across the street in the county and further down Homestead in the city.
Go ahead.
Are there instances where, I mean, because the comments tonight have been, because it's that zoning, it had to have 12 units. I mean, that was it. Is that, in fact, we wouldn't make exceptions and do less? Because 10 to 14, I think, is the designation, isn't it?
Yeah, this was a point of debate with the neighborhood and the planning commission for some time, and it was heard several times. And there was a point about a year ago where there was a statement made that the general plan density needs to be adhered to both as a minimum and a maximum. And so looking at the net acreage as it was calculated with the easements and developable area, it was found that it was 12 to 14, I think was the range, but 12 was the minimum. And that was a factor as they were looking at alternatives. Well, 12 seems like that's really the minimum, and we need to stick with the minimum, trying to have smart growth and housing development that meets the goals of the general plan. The planning commission did also hear at the, you know, a later point, they said, well, what if we really just go for the total minimum site area if you exclude all other areas? And we said, yeah, it could be less. It's actually shown on the map what the range is. It's a little bit less. You could theoretically go down to 10 units. And the planning commission said, okay, so we could go to 10. Well, we still think 12 is a good idea. And so they had that information in front of them. And they said, well, even if we could go to 10, 10 to 14 is a range. And so it's still in the middle of the range, and so that's still an acceptable number. So they didn't feel bound by 12 at the end, but they felt that it was reasonable.
Going back to the height, and that was done administratively before any of the public hearings or not?
No. Again, the, how height would be measured on this site in terms of their proposed project is, again, the definition of height is in the zoning code. As Mr. Dimmick pointed out, in 1989, we actually did an amendment to the zoning height definition. Measure A was actually passed in 1985. And in 1985, we measured height differently. Actually, it was, and I've got the actual zoning code that was in place at that time, and height was measured at that point at finished grade, and it was an average of the height at the outside foundation and the five feet away from the foundation. But it was measured from finished grade. And Mr. Dimmick was correct in saying in 1989, we actually amended the height because we were concerned that that meant you could, because it was measured from finished grade, that you could pad up the site, which did happen on the adjacent properties. It's four to seven feet higher. And so it does create a higher base elevation than what is now allowed in terms of its existing or finished, whichever's lower, is the base definition.
But then from base or lower, this one, is it almost 40 feet?
It's actually not.
Thirty-seven?
It's, and that's, again, it's measured at any and all points on the site. So, you know, at the worst case, you know, it can go up, it does go up to 38 feet at the ridge of the roof line. Now, also within our height definition, when we say 30 feet, we do make an allowance for a roof pitch to go up four feet higher. And so where you have 30-foot-high buildings in M1 zones, it's actually, goes up to 34 feet is the actual allowance for height for a roof pitch. So, you know, that, again, you know, at the worst case, yes, it is eight feet higher, or eight feet higher than the base elevation, but in most cases, it's 34 to 35 feet at the ridgeline, which is only really one to two feet higher than the allowance that's prescribed by zoning. So we felt that the one to two foot higher is a minor exception, as allowed through the exceptions in the zoning code.
Back to Cindy.
In all fairness, I'm actually not following you.
Yeah.
And I know because the site, I mean, at every point along that back fence, I suspect there's a different elevation. And then I would also, but before I go there and perhaps make someone walk up and tell me how tall, you know, how tall from existing grade, how is it different from the grade that has been filled behind it? Explain to me again, 1985, measure A, which is, was adopted by the voters.
Measure A was a pretty, very, very simple measure. It really says that the building height limitations in the zoning ordinance shall not be raised without the approval of the electorate. It was talking about height limits, not how height is measured. And so in 1985, the definition of height was, how it was measured was from finished grade. And it wasn't until 1989 that the definition was changed to address the concerns that staff had about measuring it from finished grade because it allowed applicants to potentially grade up their sites and get, you know, for surrounding properties, it was, you know, visually much higher.
So measure A, which was approved by the voters, the language of measure A did not in fact define all of this. This was all defined in, by ordinance by the city council.
The definition of how height is measured, right. I mean, again, it was tied to height limitations.
Initially defined as being at finished grade, then subsequently in 89, it was modified.
To our current definition.
Where did the, where is the language? Because Mr. Dimmick was kind enough to bring us a copy of some minutes from the 1989 meeting, although that's, I think, the planning commission, but I'm not.
Right.
And I think the city council actually adopts new ordinances.
That's correct.
The language that's currently in the zoning ordinance, is it handy? And can you, because it's got the exception language in it, somehow that got into the language at some point as well? I mean, and with all due respect, I guess lots of things can happen at different, the city council can adopt new ordinances and et cetera over time. But what does the current zoning ordinance say?
And it's actually in your staff reports, but it says, building height is the vertical distance at any and all points on the site between the base elevation and the top elevation directly above the base elevation as defined herein. And then it goes on. Then it goes on to say, the base elevation is defined as the existing or finished grade, whichever's lower, as shown on an approved topographical survey of the site at the time of a design review application. Or in such cases where a design review is not required at the time a building permit is submitted for approval. Exceptions, where unusual deviations occur in the existing grade, such as a small swale or the property is located in a floodplain, the community development director may make minor adjustments in the building height envelope to permit reasonable -- minor adjustments in the building height envelope to permit reasonable building design consistent with the intent and purpose of the building height standards for that zone. Then the other exception is when a subdivision has been approved with grade changes on the property, the approved grade change is yet to be completed, shall serve as the existing grade for the purposes of defining base elevation." And then the third exception is where fill is required on a downhill lot to increase the bed, building pad elevation to provide gravity flow to the street for sewer and/or storm drainage purposes, the base elevation shall be the approved finished grade." And then it talks about what the top elevation is, and there's, that's the highest point of a structure. Exceptions: Pitched roofs with a minimum of three and 12 pitch occupying at least 75% of the horizontal roof area and having a ridgeline shall be measured four feet below the highest ridgeline, unless the building height to the top of the parapet is greater, in which case the building height shall be measured to the highest point of the structure.
I understand perfectly. I tell you, that's so clear.
But I will tell you that this, this height definition, in terms of building height, base elevation and top elevation, is the exact same definition that was adopted by the city council in 1989, when the first height definition amendment was made that Mr. Dimmock was referring to.
Okay. Question for you then, and we can pretend we understand that. But the thing that strikes me is that it is a very, it's a, it's a very lovely project, I will tell you that. I think he did a great job on all the redesign. But it strikes me as very large for that site. And the massiveness, you know, compared to the neighbors, because you've got two-story buildings, and we're arguing where you're measuring the 30 feet. And so, I'm just-
Right. So, in terms of when you say that the height was determined, how height would be measured based on the exceptions was given to the developers, say, "This is how you can measure height based on the exceptions that are allowed." That doesn't mean that through the design review process, the design review commission or the city council can't say, you know, "We think that the height should be lower, that we think it should be 30 feet from existing grade."
Mm-hmm.
If that's, if that's what the council thinks is appropriate. Now, if you have a 30-foot height limit, that doesn't mean that it's going to be two stories.
No.
Because it's really the, the-
Right.
The height for the M zoning districts does allow a three-story structure.
Well, that, if I can jump in, I'm going to back up even one more step. The M1.5 zoning district establishes a building height limit of 30 feet. What is the intent of that 30 feet? I know you didn't choose it, but would you say that was to encourage two-story or three-stories?
Well, if you figure, you know, a eight-foot ceiling height, nine-foot ceiling height, that's what they're proposing here. And so, that would be 18 feet for the two stories, and then that would leave you 12 feet for a parking garage.
Okay. Or if they wanted to go underground with the parking garage, technically, they could go three stories above.
Yes, 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 because we wouldn't, we don't count the underground park-
So, would it be safe to say that the intent of M1.5 zoning is not to have single stories?
I know.
I mean, if you're allowing 30 feet-
Well, I wouldn't say that the intent is not to have single stories. I think the intent is to meet the, the density that's prescribed in the general plan.
Okay, then I, if I can continue on.
Sure.
All of, I've heard all of the adjacent apartments and condos have the same zoning. Is that-
Uh, that may not be. There's an M3, the, the units to the south, Walden Park, have an M3.
Oh, she gave it away.
I'll let Sandra look at that. And I guess I'm looking for a, what I call the dumb test, is, because I'm good at that, failing it. Why does this project seem so dense and larger than the adjacent projects that are seas of asphalt and there's still two stories? I'm, I'm having a disconnect, is if they're the same zoning, why do they look so different?
Well, zoning doesn't, doesn't automatically mean you have to build to the maximum density.
We're at the minimum, that's what, let me continue with the question. So if we're at the minimum, and these other-
Under the general plan.
Of 12 to-
Uh, you, you know, either from 10 to 14, you're at the midpoint, or-
Right.
Or 12 to 14.
16.
Yeah, you're at the, at the bottom. So, but the property is larger for these other projects. So, when you're measuring it against the entire size of the property, that's where you get.
That's where the difference is.
Yeah, right, right.
I knew you could explain it.
Yeah, and they may be, they're probably smaller units. They were built over 30 years ago. And so, at that time, the multifamily unit size was typically at a much, you know, 900 to 1,000 square feet.
But those developments are 12 to 16 units as well, per acre?
Per half acre.
Per half acre.
Yeah, right, because their, the density range is 22 to 30 dwelling units per acre. Right, right.
And then what is the M3 zoning?
The M3 zoning looks like it's, uh, to the west of the, I'm going to mix up the names. The west, it's, it looks like it might be to the west of the, the project that's immediately to the west of this site. I kind of need to see the next page to kind of get a sense of where that is. It cuts off.
I think I asked to understand the map. What I thought, what the map showed, since I can't clarify for, is that the residential starts just south on Homestead.
The single-family residential?
Single-family, the residential zone.
Single-family residential starts south of the southern, the project that's to the south of this.
Which are the Oak Terrace.
Right.
And that across the street, it is single-family residential, but that's on Cragmont Circle, which is up at the top of the hill.
Up the hill, right, in the county.
There was something, I have a copy of what you read aloud. There was a sentence that I, that I heard you say, which I thought actually answered one of the questions from a member of the public, which was, "Why was the determination made before it went through the process?" And the sentence seems to read, and Sandy, if you can, that the, the base elevation, is determined at the time a design review application is submitted for approval of a structure on the site. So, I would assume that it is practice to determine what the base elevation of the site is-
That it meets the height definition, right.
Before they actually submit a project and go through design review and planning.
Right.
Not as part of that process.
Again, it's, it's saying that, yes, that based on the definition and the exceptions that are allowed in the zoning code, that we told the applicant that it met the definition, that it was consistent with the zoning code and the definition of height. And so, then they began processing their application. Again, that doesn't prohibit the design review commission or the planning commission in saying, while it meets the height definition, it doesn't mean that you, you have to build it to the maximum height. You know, there's allowed, they could, they could have said, "We think it needs to be lower."
Can I ask a procedural question then?
Oh, sure.
Yes.
Go here.
So, the planning commission has approved a tentative. Yeah. So, what entitlements are sitting out? Supposing enough of us said, "It's too high, too big." Where are we?
Well, I, I would, I would say that if you feel that the massing of the project needs to be reduced and the height needs to be reduced, what they have entitlements for is a 12-unit project with a footprint. So, if they wanted, you know, if you felt that it needed to be smaller from a massing perspective or lower, that could be sent back to the design review commission in terms of saying, you know, maybe you need to reduce the size of the units, or maybe you need to lower the ceiling heights for the units so that you can drop it down two feet. They're at nine feet, you could probably drop it down to eight feet. It's not a very gracious height, but it's, you know, it's, it's a, you know, it's a standard, probably, single-family home bedroom height. So, you certainly have the purview to do that.
Can I ask along those lines, though? I mean, certainly, these must have come up during the design review and planning. These suggestions had have been made to make the units smaller, to make the building-
Well, and they did.
So, what were the, I mean, other than because they didn't have to, are there commercial reasons why it just becomes unfeasible? Are there engineering reasons why it's, I mean, I would be curious to know why we are where we are in terms of the size of the building, in terms of the height and the density?
Because, you know, they went through a two-and-a-half-year process. They came in with 15 units originally with much bigger unit sizes. They have dropped it down to 12 units. They've dropped the size of the units. They've dropped the footprint of the units, the footprint of the structure from original, I think it was 13%. Now, it's, you know, they've dropped it to, dropped it by 25%. So, I believe that the planning commission's decision and the design review commission's decision was based on that they have reduced and brought it into what they feel is consistent with the zoning and the design review standards for the city. So, they, that's their decision. And, but again, it's been appealed to the, the city council, so now the city council can certainly make design review decisions about height or massing.
One of the comments we heard was that, that during the design review process, Commissioner McDonald voted no on the project, yet the minutes from the meeting say that she wasn't there.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I think I'll have to ask Steve to respond to that.
No, no, no nos. So, I'm confused with, was there a vote at a previous meeting? Was there ever a vote? I'm looking for some clarification on that.
Yes, there, there was a previous meeting at which the project was in front of the planning commission, and, um, is she not on the planning commission?
No, no, she's on the design review commission.
Yeah.
I remember her voting no, but I think it was an earlier meeting, so I'm not quite, I'm not remembering exactly how that happened.
The final design, the minutes of the, of the final design review commission hearing were that there were no nos.
I, I do remember now. I'm sorry. There, there was an earlier meeting where they were looking at option A and B on the facades.
Okay.
And, and Commissioner McDonald had seen the story polls, and all of the commissioners had been invited to go see the story polls before they had to be taken down at PG&E's direction because they were too close to some power lines. But that's a separate issue. So, so-
There's an 11.
Commissioner McDonald, I think, just said, you know, she didn't support either one, that they were both too big. And that she had seen the story polls and that it had sort of swayed her to vote against the project. There was then another meeting when they took their final action, and I believe she was not there, and Commissioner Gorney was there, and he abstained because he had not seen all of the plans at the previous meeting, because he had missed that one. So, there were actually two commissioners that-
So, I know Commissioner Gorney is sitting here in the room. The abstention was not due to lack of information at that meeting, but due to not having participated and had the information in the previous meeting. And he's nodding in the affirmative.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so, sometimes we don't understand why the abstentions are there.
Yes.
Can I speak in here?
Sure.
Ask a question.
Anytime.
There was a, there was a comment from, I believe it was Ms. Wilson, that the design review commission did not see the story polls, but from what I'm hearing, they did see the story polls.
No.
No.
Planning commission saw them.
Planning commission and the design review commission were invited to see them. They were informed that they were up, and they were up for several weeks.
Okay. Got it. Cindy, I know you have more.
I've already been turned in for-
Well, I've got a, Kish, come on, we've been jeopardizing this. We've been here, I know you're writing notes. I'm sorry.
Actually jeopardizing is the better word.
Just a question with regard to traffic and the creation of this new center of turn lane. Just, really, we're just looking for a general reaction to the public concern that's been raised about exacerbating a traffic problem on the street, and in particular, some of the folks that live on Melissa Court, and the, which is adjacent to this, to the project. How was it considered the potential implications to the folks on that court and to the neighborhood in general? And could you just sort of respond, if you wouldn't mind, to those general traffic concerns?
Well, the intent of the turn lane is actually to help with traffic in terms of helping people be able to get out of the flow of traffic to make a turn. And so, there's currently driveways serving the adjacent development, and then it, but those people have to just wait in the middle of traffic if they want to come in or get out. So, the turn lane would give them a refuge so that they could at least cross half of the street. Say they're coming out of Oak Terrace. They would come out into the turn lane as a refuge before they emerged into traffic on Homestead. Say it was backed up. They would have at least someplace to go in the interim. And similarly, coming into their driveway, they would have someplace to wait if there was traffic opposing them and coming the other direction. So, that's the overall intent. And it also does extend away from Ignacio Valley, so it actually extends the turn lane at Ignacio Valley for cars, again, who are turning left. If there's a backup, that there's more storage room this way than currently exists. And traffic engineering just felt that that was a fair trade-off between on-street parking, since there isn't any now, that, you know, that not providing any additional, but having the guest parking inside would kind of be a fair trade.
So, the left-turn pocket, or I guess it's a left-right turn pocket, no, no, left-turn pocket, will actually extend all the way down to what's, is it private drive?
Yes.
That's actually the name of it? Or the private driveway that serves Oak Terrace and Walden Park?
Yes. It would extend down to the existing driveway on the south side of the property. And then it would taper down, and then there would be on-street parking where there currently is in front of the existing condominiums, that would remain. And so, the turn lane would taper down and, and go away at the curve in the road.
And how many units, do you know, are in Oak Terrace and, is it Walden Park? Walnut Park, I'm sorry.
Um, there are, I believe there's close to 200 units in, combined in those two.
Being, using that driveway.
And I believe there's access on Walnut as well.
Thank you.
And then just lastly, in terms of, so for those adjacent developments now, whether they're much larger, 200-ish units, I, I don't, this, I, the question I wanted to ask is, how many visitors do they have? Much visitor parking, I don't know if you know, up hand exists for those, and what is therefore the potential impact of additional visitors on the folks on Melissa Court relative to where we are today?
I can't really speak to that.
Okay. Just sense of the scale of this, I mean, do you have a sense of whether, I mean, or was it discussed at some point, this question that they're raising, that these folks that live in these adjacent courts are somehow going to become a parking lot for visitors for this new project? I mean, given 12 units, you know, I'm just-
There is definitely-
What's your opinion?
There's definitely discussion about overflow parking, and that's why the guest parking spaces were, were included and factored into the discussion, because it was definitely discussed.
Do you know what the current traffic is on Homestead Avenue? Because I know that is of concern, and I certainly understand that.
Yeah, we got that number earlier, was it 8,000?
It's, it's over 8,000 daily trips right now. It's actually down from before the restrictions were put on at Ignacio Valley, the turn restrictions that were mentioned by one of the neighbors.
Oh, yes.
It used to be 10,000, and now it's down about 8,500.
Per day?
Yes.
Cindy, if you go to Maloney's drawing, number five, it shows the striping plan. Any other questions? Measure, the statement was made, I don't know if this goes to Paul or Sandra or both, "Measure A will be violated if we go forward with this, and we're setting a dangerous precedent." Are we violating measure A? And are we setting a precedent by interpreting the ordinance in the way we're interpreting it? Or have there been other instances that come to mind where we've made, I forget the exact words, the, where we can make the exceptions? I know there's about four questions, so good luck.
Well, I'll start with the first one is that, again, the measure A was not about how height is measured, it's height limitations. Again, it was, it was a very simple measure, and it just, you know, it says, "The people, the city of Walnut Creek do ordain as follows: The building height limitations in the zoning ordinance shall not be raised without the approval of the electorate." And then it went on to not allow use permits to raise that height, nor it, no building could exceed 6- could exceed six stories. And so, in terms of, no, we are not measuring, we are not violating Measure A in terms of interpretations of how height is measured. And as I indicated at the beginning, is, yes, we have made exceptions as allowed for in the zoning code for projects. A big, or a good example is the Mercer project. There was, right in the middle of the site, there was a swell. And so, if you measured from existing grade there, at the middle of the building, it is higher than 15, 50 feet for, from existing grade. But because of the unusual swell right in the middle of the site, we applied that exception. And we did apply an exception for the project up on, off of Spring Brook, which was a, was a proposed live-work project, had significant grade changes. And actually, I believe that your firm worked on that project, too. And I can't remember how, you know, there was a drop-off point that was, you know, kind of unusual compared to the rest of the site. And so, again, we looked at the exception and felt that it could be applied. So, yes, we have applied it in other cases.
Thank you. Any other questions of anybody?
So, Measure A says that the height limit at the time of the zoning ordinance, so that was 1985. So, what I'm assuming is that this piece of property, or these two pieces, they're two parcels, actually, correct? These two parcels have been zoned for 30 feet since 1985 or prior.
Yes.
Depending on where you measure.
That's the crux.
And whether you want the parapet.
Are we done with questions? Are we ready for comments? And who would like, do you want to take a break?
Yes.
Three? All right. We've had a request, a second request.
Someone couldn't wait. I apologize. I'll continue with the meeting by myself while you go.
Let's reconvene at, in five minutes, at 10 o'clock. We'll make it quick. I know I'm tired, so, I'm sure we all are. Would any council member care to start the discussions and their comments? Or make a motion or not make a motion? All right. Do I have to choose somebody?
Well, I'll be happy to start it, yes. I think the biggest thing that has concerned me is, it's been a very long process, two and a half years, and I can appreciate that and the reductions that have been done and all of that. And it's, it's almost like a game from where you measure. And I think it comes down to, for me, is it, as I say, it's a beautiful building. I compliment you on that. But I think it is too massive for the site. For the neighbors, I would tell you, there probably will be a project, so you will have construction. You will have, you know, a lot of the considerations that you're concerned about because something will probably happen there. But I do feel that it is just too much for that site. And when I look at, you know, the adjoining property owners or the adjoining projects, and you're looking at almost 40 feet, 38 feet, admittedly, it's not much, but it's just too much. And we've been going on for a long, long time tonight, but that's, I think the drainage will be taken care of. I have very little concerns about some of the other issues because it is a good site for a project, and, but I don't think it is the proper transition in this neighborhood. Needs to be slightly less.
Can I ask you a question before somebody else?
Sure.
When you say it's too much and it should be something less, is that in terms of height?
Massing. Massing. It's, yeah, height and massing, because I think the pictures, the pictures of the story polls, I think really, both of us had that reaction to that, or at least I thought you were reacting with me, to that orange thing, and you go, "My gosh, that is really big." And so, it's, it's.
You're saying less units, smaller units?
Yes. Well, I don't care if it's, it's, they can be smaller unit, yes. They can be smaller units, you can keep 12 units, but they need to be smaller. It's the massing and height of it.
I'd like to ask you a question. The height is 30 feet at the street. Is that where you're bothered?
It's the, no, it's the, well, no, actually, from the street level, it's not too bad. It's from the sides and the back where it does, impacts the other residents.
Would you care to make comments, Ms. Silva?
Well, I am definitely struggling with this. So, let's, you know, what do I think is workable, reasonable, right? First, the process has been very long, and I do appreciate the number of meetings, and I appreciate the fact that over, that the Planning Commission and the Design Review Commission did work with the applicant and the public in terms of reducing the size by 25 percent from the original. And that is a significant reduction. I actually like the fact that you don't see the cars. I don't think it's open space. When I look at the aerial view of this, I see trees, but I see mostly asphalt and roof on the other projects. So, I think that the parking is underground is a benefit to the community as a whole. Driving by to see cars is not, is not looking at green space, that's looking at asphalt. The, now, the challenge, of course, is when you go underground, you are now going down and you're raising to get underneath it. I also think that the project is going to improve the quality of life in the neighborhood with the addition of sidewalks, the left turn lane, the better queuing, et cetera. And that, now, the way it's working, and if you even watched it, you have people coming out of that private driveway, probably as much as 100 to 200 cars, based on the number of units that are coming off of there, are coming out of the private driveway and trying to make left turns against traffic that is coming around that bend and heading toward Ignacio Valley Road and the signal. This obviously will improve that. I appreciate the fact that there's been an effort to save the five oak trees, but there has been a trade-off as a result because they cannot raise the grade. Conceivably, they should be allowed to raise the grade because all of the surrounding properties did the same thing. They didn't come in there and not raise that grade. That grade was not, on the surrounding properties, was not like that to begin with because the retaining walls clearly indicate they weren't. The storm drainage will work better. But the challenge is to figure out how you actually measure height when, in fact, you can't backfill appropriately to match even the grade on the other properties that are behind it. Because if there was nothing else, a reasonable assumption would be, you should at least be able to backfill to make it level. If you've had anything built next to you on a single-family home property, if somebody raises the grade next to you, you know you're getting water that's going to come at you. So, you need to be able to match the grades, conceivably. That would be my reasonable assumption as a layperson. So, there's somewhere between four and seven feet of grade that is in question at the back of the property. Yet to save the trees, you can't level the grade and make it consistent. I mean, at the very least, I would assume you have to make the pad level to build on. So, I'm struggling with the height issue. I, my reading of the zoning ordinance is that the ordinance allowed for this determination. The question is a subjective one there. And the subjective question is, do we believe this building, as it's proposed, is appropriate for the N1 and 5, given the shape and topography of the land, the size of the lot? And things become challenging when lots are at this size. You're not going to get a configuration such as what you built in the early 1980s on a much bigger lot. You can't get a driveway to work appropriately the way they did in the back across bigger. And so, I'm struggling with, what do I think? So, I did walk along, and so I'm making, you know, I'm thinking out loud. I did walk along the back, and I looked at how the trees, the tree canopy is very, very nice. And the tree canopy, saving the trees saves the screening for the four units that, from their second story, look across this property. And some of those units actually look into the back room of the second story of the blue duplex, as opposed to the pink duplex, I guess, the blue duplex. I mean, you're looking straight in that room, so it's, it would just be higher.
Go ahead, Kish.
I think Cindy has summarized my feelings on this pretty well, quite honestly. I'm enjoying my first meeting, by the way. Thanks, everybody.
(laughing).
But heck, you may as well take on a tough one, you know, to get your feet wet. And this is a tough one for, I think you summarized it really well. I mean, as I'm looking at this, my feeling has been that it's been a two and a half year process where the applicant has, is not asking for one variance, where they have been extremely conscientious about starting with a project design and iterating it through reducing the size ultimately by 25 percent, substantially changing the materials and look and feel on the design of the building, working in a very conscientious way around preserving the trees, which I think is a very important thing. I agree that, I personally, I also favor the notion of having the parking under the building and not having a sea of asphalt and not having more flat parking lots and exposing cars. But I think hiding those cars is a design principle that I really favor and I think is very positive going forward. I also agree that it appears will be improving the step, the stretch of Homestead Avenue because of the turn, the left turn lane and because of the curb and gutter. Those are all really positive improvements to the neighborhood, I agree. Then the height limit. And I, look, I understand that this is, I can see the argument that this fits within the exception allowance that is, that exists in the, in the rule today. But part of me is really feeling that one of the reasons this has taken two and a half years and one of the reasons that we're agonizing over this is because at the end of the day, in a lot of people's gut, this project feels too big for the space. And I don't, and I don't know enough about the, you know, massing and height. I think I'm just sort of thinking about the size and scale and feel of this building relative to the neighborhood. And when I look at the 500 signatures and, or something like that in the petition that was, that was presented as part of my packet, I'm actually persuaded that that's a significant number of people that have, that have expressed their concern over the course of this project. It's non-trivial. I think the neighbors feel really strongly about that, and I think there's a reason for it.
I definitely agree that it's non-trivial, but I guess I'll bring us back to a couple of points. It's a different era in the way we're designing structures and designing residences, and we're applauding the, the use of going with underground parking. So, we're not looking at that sea of asphalt. But we're also, the reason the mass appears larger than the adjacent areas is also because we're having a lot of green space and by saving these trees. There has to be a trade-off. You can't have it both ways. You can't say, "Okay, we want to have a small 28 feet or 30-foot high," because that's what is allowed. It could be 30 feet high, up to 34 feet, and then, and remove the trees. I mean, this, there has to be a balance of how we want to configure this site. Quite frankly, lowering the structure two feet, and that's basically what it is, because we're hitting 37 or 38 feet at isolated areas. It's not like we're at 38 for the entire development. Two feet is not, I mean, I think Mr. Dimick used the, you know, example of six feet. You know, are we insignificant? I hope none of us feel that we're insignificant when you're talking about six feet. But when you're talking about a 37-foot-high structure and you're going down to 34, that's not going to make a heck of a lot of difference in terms of appearance, but it's going to make a significant difference, and it'll have a significant impact on trying to design a sellable unit. You can't just go down to, you know, change your ceiling heights that simply. So, you're right, this is very difficult. You're right, the, it's been a long process, and I emphasize with the neighbors. However, one thing that hasn't been brought up is that we need housing. This adds 12 housing units to our community, which is sorely needed. So, do I know for sure whether I'm going to vote? I think I'm leaning a certain way, but, folks, this is about, you know, somebody mentioned that the council has an obligation. And you're right, we have, but we have an obligation to 66,500 people in this city and to improve our entire city. And does that mean make tough decisions? Yes, Kish, welcome aboard. It's a tough decision. So, I could go on, but I'm past my three minutes, and I like Mr. Glassford's comment that brevity is a good idea. So, do we have a motion or more comments?
No, well, just, I would say that one of the things, and I agree with all the positives, as I say, I think there should be a project here, and I think all of the improvements that have been proposed really are great and that the area would be improved. I just, still, and feeling, and, you know, you say we have an obligation. I look at it, do, what would I want in my neighborhood, is how I look at it.
Are you?
And that's where it changes your entire perspective of, if somebody, you know, crossed the street, if they changed the zoning over there, you know, at some point, and all of a sudden, you're waking up with this very large.
But I, if I may ask you, now, I guess we can deliberate, since we've had our comments.
Sure.
Would you prefer to keep the trees?
Yes.
What would happen if this would have come to the council and it would, the trees were gone? We removed all the trees, we.
We weren't going to let them remove the trees.
Well, there could have been some sort of an appeal that would have allowed removing the trees. But again, are we not, are we doing the proper balance here? Are we being fair to everybody?
Well, I think, yes. I'm not saying no project. It's just that I don't know that this, now, I know that they have the footprint. But I just think it is too much for that neighborhood. You drive by, I mean, you look at all of the pictures and the, particularly the story polls, and I'm just very, very uncomfortable with it. And I think the problem is, and I know that the general plan is a guideline, but there were some assumptions made right away that you have to hit the minimum. I mean, you can't go less than, and you have to, you can, you're allowed 30 feet, therefore that's a given. And I question that, and as it said, you know, the Design Review or Planning Commission could have made a different determination. And I think they worked very well with the developer because this is so much better than the first one. But for me, it's not quite, it's still too massive.
And I'm sensing where this is going. Maybe I'm wrong. If we can try to provide more direction, are you saying that 38 feet would not be acceptable to you or others on the council? Is that the number one priority, getting it down to 38 feet or reducing the units for the massing? And could you, you see, I'm trying to give some direction.
Yes.
Are some isolated instances of height allowed near the street, but to reduce it around the perimeter? I mean, again, this site is not that big. Is there any further, I mean, I hate to be playing Design Review Commissioner here, I really do.
But I know where you're coming from. Yeah, it's that old thing of, "Show me something."
Yeah.
But they don't know what to show you.
And what the heck? It's only been two and a half years. It goes another two years, right? I'm just kidding. Any?
Yeah, I, a couple of comments here. Let me toss in that I do believe that these are moderate-sized units. Let me toss in that I do believe that these are moderate-sized units, that in today's, if there's an average in here and you look at the table that lists the, the unit sizes and actually in the Design Review Commission report, it listed the sizes of each unit. You could scan through it. These are not overly large. They're not Mercer-sized, and I don't believe that, um, I don't think that making these units smaller actually is in a great benefit to anyone. Small units that don't sell are not, are not good for the neighborhood. Small units that don't, it, there is, they needs, it needs to be marketable. The other thing is, I, I would agree with you, Gary, that I don't think two feet difference one way or the other, when you stand back fifty to seventy feet across a driveway, thirty-eight feet, you begin to, it is, it will be what it will be. And even eight feet is not going to make, even if you did thirty feet, that line of sight is still, there is a building going to be there that was not there before. We've recently had an experience, um, that I'm very familiar with, where something changed, it's totally, it's just new, it's different, and all the trees disappeared as well. And so, and that was unfortunate. These are not, we're preserving the trees, but where there was previously only one real unit that you can see that's a two-story, even if we told them to put it right at grade and somehow there was an ability to put the parking someplace else, in downtown Walnut Creek and we'll bust them in, or something like that, which is not allowed, they would still be looking at significantly more building than what they are today. And that's, I, that's the, the conundrum that I find is, I'm not sure, it's the half, I'm not sure it's that last, last two to five feet, actually, I think is what it is, and the difference between the grades between the two properties, et cetera. Finally, I don't think ten units or nine units would make a difference in the height of the building either, because there is only so much space in that property. I don't think this would look significantly different until we chopped the zoning down to multifamily, whatever it would be, which would be probably half the number of units per acre. And are we willing to go there? Because you can tell, they, they can continue to try to squeeze, but I'm not sure we're ever going to get to the point where it's going to be a sign-
You said it much more eloquent than I could, yes.
But how did they go from, how did they reduce it twenty-five percent since the beginning? If they were able to go that far?
It went, it went all the way across the property.
And they were removing the trees initially.
Right, and they were removing the trees.
Yeah.
That's the trade-off.
And the units were larger, I mean, every little element. But now, and then you have your C-three requirements, which take up land, which was never allowed for originally, when the zoning was established, let alone all the general plan. So, I mean, I'm really struggling with, we can't, I don't think they could do it with ten and have a marketable product. Yes, you could have six hundred square foot units, but is there anything? I mean, there's, there aren't even rental apartments that are that. And so, you struggle with this piece of property, what's appropriate?
Well, I definitely agree that there's a project to be had here, and this is why I'm listening very carefully to, to you all. And I'm also respecting that the Design Review and Planning Commission have capable people that spend a lot of time on this, and I know that some of the residents maybe have, had expressed, and I think, well, their concerns with the process in general, but there are, there's real expertise that, that exists on those commissions, and there's real expertise that exists amongst our staff and amongst the applicant and amongst you, because we've looked at these before. And so, um, while I clearly have some reservations here, I think that, I also think that, look, it, the, this applicant, this process has happened through the rules that we have for the zoning and for the height limits that are here, notwithstanding the debate about how the height limits are being, um, applied here relative to the exception. But at the end of the day, it's not, it's not a variance and it's not outside the process. And if there's a project to be had, which I think there can and should be, um, this is a tough one, but it looks like it's, uh-
Is it?
It looks like it, it, it's, you know, it is what it is here.
You were asking, uh, just, I have a question, uh, Sandra, what would happen if, if the thirty feet were measured from the lowest point? It would be less visible by how many feet? It would lower it four to seven feet, is that what it would do? Oh, okay. I have a feeling I'm losing this argument, and it's very, very late, but, uh-
I'm, I'm calling this a nice discussion, this is not an argument.
No, 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 no.
At least in my mind. Is there a motion to be made? We could go around and around, and I, and I think, I don't think anybody is at the, you know, hundred percent, zero percent level on this. This is, this is tough. Any motion? We've got to do something, folks.
While, while somebody's thinking about making their motion, there, there's somewhere along the way that, well, I guess, I was trying to think of how the, the process could have been improved, um, so that, uh, the developer isn't, and the homeowners are not dragged out for two and a half years and, and we're sitting here going, "How did this happen?"
Well, but-
Yeah, and we sort of, I mean-
Well, but part of that, I think so, is that that shows that, how the developer, I think, maybe in incremental steps, has been working with the neighborhood, perhaps not to the degree that the neighborhood would prefer. It's, it's a long process.
Yeah.
And how long, we can't prolong it, another five minutes, let's-
Okay, I move in favor that we approve staff's recommendation and deny the appeal and uphold the decision of the Design Review Commission.
Second.
We have a motion in a second? I think this holds, we should-
Councilmember Rajan?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Rainey?
Who?
Mayor Skrall?
Thank you all. Sit down, we're not done. Oh, no, we got, we got more business.
I've lost my agenda.
So have I.
All this paper. Does, does anybody want these back? Okay, I'll, I'll leave it over here.
As we move along to item six, council member and staff announcements or brief reports on activities. Any reports, Mr. Pecorni?
No.
Should we, did Mr. Simmons stick around? He did.
Oh, yes. I would think he'd have been out taking a nap.
He did.
Oh, keep making-
The other thing is, I think I should take care of, I enjoy this meeting almost as much as you do.
Any announcements after your first meeting that you get to sleep through?
No announcements.
Done, okay. Mrs. Rainey?
No, just happy holidays and Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and all of those things.
Cindy?
Same, happy holidays, skated the ice rink, enjoy the leisure center performances, and shop in downtown Walnut Creek.
And I'll extend my happy holiday wishes to all of you.
And Mayor Skrall, if I could also extend my wishes for happy holidays to everybody that'd be there.
Certainly, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year. We're back here, what, January sixth?
Sixth.
I believe, and yes. Don't, don't just go to the theater or go ice skating, go have a dinner downtown Walnut Creek.
Yes.
Go see a play. How many plays are showing at the leisure right now, Mr. Pecorni? Three different? Christmas Carol?
Four or five a day.
And of course, there is a place called Broadway Plaza and our wonderful shops downtown Walnut Creek. Go ahead and do some good shopping. With that, happy holidays, meeting is adjourned.